Good evening. Welcome to the Costa Mesa Planning Commission meeting for Monday, September 12, 2022. I call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Erath to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You will please stand.
After me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Erath. Anna, can we have the roll call, please?
Chair Deerekel.
Here.
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Please note Commissioner Rojas is present via Zoom. Commissioner Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Vivar.
Here.
Commissioner Erath.
Present.
Okay, thank you very much. This brings us to announcements and presentations on the agenda this evening. We have none listed, so we'll move to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the public can address the Planning Commission on matters within our jurisdiction but are not on tonight's agenda. Speaker will have three minutes. Would appreciate if you provide your name and address for the record. Don't have to, but it helps with the Assembly of the Minutes. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, audience. My name is Carrie Mizera. I am the Executive Director of Renaissance School International. We are on the agenda for the September 26 meeting. Today, I wanted to come and introduce myself, but also invite you all and the public to our info sessions this week. We are hosting two info sessions. But just a little bit about the school. Renaissance School International is the first trilingual immersion school in Orange County. We are a private, for-profit school, fully funded by tuition and pay all the applicable taxes. Since 2011, we have been tenants in the Mesa Verde community. For the last 11 years, we have made Costa Mesa home, and we have fell in love with the place, really. We have also made positive impacts in the community, in the areas of education, culture, and economics. Trust me, all our school families are frequent shoppers of the stores nearby. Many of them also have planted roots in the community by purchasing homes and renting because they want their children to attend our school for the long haul. We are very excited because we now have an opportunity to make 1600 Adams our future home. 1600 Adams, if you remember, is the former 24-hour fitness building. We are looking forward to making that space an attractive landmark of the city. We want to invite you to join us at our info session this week. It's going to be Thursday evening at 6:30 p.m. and Saturday morning at 10:30 a.m. at the 1600 Adams location. We have mailed out hard copies of invitations to over 500 residents in the area already, but we wanted to also invite you. I have some flyers that I wanted to pass out today, so any of you who are able to come, we'd love for you to come and ask questions and show your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Mr. Humphrey, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. I'm disappointed that the council has chosen to put on the ballot Measure K. My disappointment is driven by the fact that there is absolutely nothing in Measure K to meet their goal. Six of the members made numerous and lengthy comments about this is the only way that they can, in fact, meet the RIN number, the number of the housing required by the state over the next eight years. Unfortunately, there is nothing in this ordinance that actually stipulates and deals specifically with housing. It does not note a requirement for any affordable housing or any other kind of housing in particular. It stipulates that it will handle it through an inclusionary ordinance, but there is no inclusionary ordinance in place, and begs the question if that ordinance will show up if, in fact, this measure passes and simply gives the council control over the areas that they have listed in their corridors. My concern here is that this is not accomplishing the goal the council stipulated they wanted this to handle, and that concerns me greatly because it does it at the risk of taking away a right to vote by the public to look at their own community and help decide what this community is supposed to look like. It does not specify any specific kinds of -- they talk about visioning, but it doesn't require any specific kinds of visioning to be done within that process. So here we now have a measure that's going to go before the public that, at best, at best, simply gives the council the ability to now step past the public and the public's feelings on major developments, which simply happens only if the entitlements, the allowed densities on different properties exceed what's already allowed there. So if they, in fact, up the amount of stuff you can build on a place, that's the only time that Measure Y would come into consideration and a vote of the public would come into consideration. Therefore, I wish that -- I hope that you folks will figure out when this goes before the public and how you feel about it. I know how some of you already do because of comments you've already made and put into the public record, which I appreciate straightforwardness by everybody always. Thank you very much for your time. Please keep this in mind. This is not going to help, and it does take away the vote of the people on large developments that impact our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Wendy Simone, and I'm going to be here in the office as well. Look, I know it's not in front of you, but you guys have access to it, to page 11, number 2 and -- no, sorry, 3 and 4 are the ones I'm going to be talking about. It says if there are any complaints about noise and so on, that the CUP, you know, is null and void, you know. And in 2021, they just redid the CUP. I can't get my hands on that one. But I did get my hands on the 2019 one about the juice bar going in. It says that it's going to be from 6 a.m. to 8 p.m., the gym hours. So it's the gym hours, according to the CUP, you know, everybody goes by this CUP, is 6 to 8. Why am I hearing bass at 5:14, 4:30 in the morning, you know, after 8 o'clock at night? Basically, why am I hearing bass in general? This used to be a lumberyard. This building used to literally be a lumberyard, so there's no insulation. They did some upgrades. I can't get copies of the upgrades. I work 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. You know, it's hard to get up to City Hall. I can't get, you know, I mean, it is literally like a concert lives next door. Code enforcement said they can't get the readings I am, but there is a cinder block wall that divides the yard next to me and where I live, and I think that that bass is just going right through it and just spreading everywhere. I mean, there is intense bass. I mean, the code enforcement ladies, whenever they came out to measure the inside of my house because it made me really feel like I was the problem that they're measuring my house, whenever I can hear it outside. I just want to sit outside and play video games without having to hear the bass, and I want to be able to sleep past 5:14 in the morning without having to hear the bass, okay? And then also, it says that in the codes here, it says, "In the event the alleged offense noise consists entirely of impact noise, simple tone noise, speech, music, which would be bass, or any combination thereof, each of the above noise levels shall be reduced by five." So they should be at 45 at 5:00 in the morning, correct, and at 55 throughout the day. So, yeah, and then I got this state one that is the noise element, page N-6, and it's showing that nothing should be outside of a gymnasium or a sports club, you know, commercial. So I'm just wondering when the gym's going to be quiet because I'm really tired of hearing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and they're louder the next day. I forgot.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Oops, sorry. Hold on. Is the microphone not on? There you go.
Excellent. My name is Vicki Lund. I own a home in Costa Mesa. Love our city and so thankful for each one of you and your commitment to making improvements in Costa Mesa. I'm calling her -- I'm here in reference to the cannabis dispensary or the storefront that may be opening right in walking distance from my home. I'm opposed to it, unfortunately. I, you know, I understand whoever's here is going to be trying to open up the business. I can appreciate that, but unfortunately, we already have such enormous problems in our city.
Ma'am, are you speaking about the application before us tonight on Orange Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would have you wait, and when we open the public hearing from that, you can make your comments then.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the public wish to speak to in public comment tonight? Again, these are on matters not on tonight's agenda. No one in chambers? Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or telephone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Lee, have we looked into CUP compliance on the gym that the lady's been here several meetings now to?
Yes, Chair, we have. Our community improvement staff have been out to the site multiple times, as have our police department staff. Unfortunately, as indicated, we have not been able to gather any evidence of a violation of the noise ordinance, but we are continuing to work with the community residents on some possibilities, as well as the business owner themselves in terms of just good neighbor practices.
Okay, if we can just stay on top and make sure we're working with her, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of public comment. We'll move to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Rojas will begin with you.
I have none, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner -- oops. Let me reset that. Commissioner Erath.
Thank you, Chair. Just one comment. This Saturday, from 9 to noon, the Costa Mesa Sanitary District is hosting a cleanup in the back bay. You can go online to their website if you're interested in signing up and helping clean up some trash for a few hours and getting dirty. So that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Vivar.
Oh, there we go. Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a few comments here. One, I want to thank the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets, who were out on the streets handing out bike lights at several intersections several weeks ago. Just want to appreciate their hard work in making Costa Mesa a safer place to bike and walk, and I hope that our work as a city and as a commission may continue to forward the sort of the cause of active transportation and biking and walking in the city. And I'd also like to, on this day after September 11th, like to remind us to keep the families in our thoughts and prayers, those who were impacted on those horrible events of 21 years ago, and that we may all remember them, as well as those service members who were sent overseas after those events, and whenever we cite the Pledge of Allegiance and remember our flag. So, and that all of us may continue to work in whatever ways we can for greater dialogue and peacemaking in our society so that we may be agents of peace and hope and be able to counter the voices of hatred out there. And so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Russell.
Just one reminder to this weekend, on Friday, from 5 to 9 is Art Adventure, the opening ceremonies at the Somali Theater in the Arts District, and then also it's also going on during the day from 12 to 5 on Saturday. So some come down and see the art and enjoy the activities. There's going to be live music, art booths, and some art tours of the Seagerstrom Center. So come on down. It's all free. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Toller, I'm assuming you have a short presentation tonight?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make it quick. Won't be more than about five minutes. Thank you for letting me have these. I'm really tempted to talk about the question of whether we need to build more housing. Since our last meeting, two homes have been listed on my street, both over $3 million, and they're single-family homes. They're one-story. They're regular-sized lots. They're not bay fronts. They don't come with a yacht. They don't come with a private jet. One's 3.1, one's 3.7. The rent near my house, the kind of a -- I'm not talking pre-war charming, well-built, multifamily, kind of dumpy, multiplex, two-bedrooms. $3,000 in front of me for the back unit. Around the corner from me, $3,500. So if you want to rent a two-bedroom in Eastside now, you have to be making over $140 a year. Median sales price in Costa Mesa is over 1.2 now, I believe. So if you want to buy a home, median-priced home, $200,000 a year, you got to be making, and fork out $1.25 million as a down payment. This used to be a city of regular folk with regular jobs, and we're swapping out our population really fast with people that are either very well-connected or very loaded. But I'm going to resist going on and on about that. I want to talk about the question of how we grow because it's kind of inevitable, forces beyond our control, that we're going to grow. I think it's more productive to be talking about how we should grow, and I want to do what I can, as long as I'm up here, to keep talking about that productive subject and trying to elevate the quality of this discussion. So there's two primary reasons that people resist growth. If you pay attention to why people are arguing about this, I've, from my observations, I've kind of categorized it into two problems. We assume that new buildings will be ugly, and we assume that more residents will inevitably mean more traffic, right, more cars on the road. Are those true or not? That's a good question. I think the answer is they might be true, but they aren't necessarily true. If we plan well for our future, they don't have to be true, and they shouldn't be true. So I just want to answer this question real quick in the next four minutes. What can we do to ensure that we grow well? And I just want to back up and think of the big things, broad strokes here. One, we need to adopt design standards. We're talking zoning requirements for new buildings to look decent and engage public space. Two, we need to stop making driving so easy and getting around in any other way so difficult and uncomfortable. Three, make the public realm nice. If we can handle these three things, and there's a lot to each of them, but if we can handle these things, we can ensure that as we grow, we're growing into a quiet, leafy, comfortable, livable city. So I'll just take these in turn real quick, adopt design standards for new buildings to look decent, engage public space. Take a look through these bullet points I have here. Big windows, interesting ground floors, simple forms and facades, quality materials, like facing like. This doesn't ruin a city right here, but this is what a lot of people are afraid of. If you say five stories, people are going to come unglued. There's a lot of places in Costa Mesa where this would just be just fine. This is what's being proposed in Claremont. This is four stories, big windows, engaging ground floor. It doesn't have to be a commercial ground floor, even if it's fully residential projects. What matters is how they land and how they shape the street, how they shape the street's gate, and the places that they create where people are. And it's at all scales. It's not just big projects. We talk a lot about, quote-unquote, preserving our residential neighborhoods, which I find objectionable because it sounds like we're protecting owners of $3 million houses from renters. But this doesn't ruin anybody's neighborhood. This is a lot of units, but look what it's doing right. Those are dignified, respectable homes of people. See those red doors? They do a good job of engaging the space and presenting itself civically to the street. This is illegal in our R1 and probably our 2 zones, but it does a good job. This looks -- this is what -- this checks all the boxes of what we actually care about when we say we want to protect our residential neighborhoods. This is a duplex. This is double the density of what we allow in our R1 zone. Stop making driving so easy and walking and biking and transit so difficult. So this is how we are growing in California. This is how our neighboring cities and a lot of cities up in the Bay Area are growing. If this is what growth looks like, if this is what density and more housing looks like, I'm a newbie too. This is a catastrophe. This is what cities used to look like for hundreds of years, for centuries. You have everything mixed up in there. People walk around. People bike around. This is a catastrophe. It's an environmental catastrophe. You have the low-income people on one side. You have the wealthier people on the other side. You're in a little apartment. You go downstairs, and there's nothing to do. There's nowhere to go. You need to drive to get anywhere within here. This is a bad way to plan, and if we're not careful and we're not thinking and talking about these things all the time, this is what -- this is the result that we're going to end up with, with the state driving the train. Sorry, my clicker's a little slow. But please read through just these things on the right. I think everybody kind of resonates with what these little cartoons are trying to say. This is what it feels like to be a pedestrian on most of our streets because we allocate so much space to the fast movement of cars. If we want a livable city as we grow, we need streets with low traffic volume and low speeds, and where we can't do that, we need protected bike lanes. This is a picture from the National Association of City Transportation Officials, NACTO, and I've always liked it because it really reminds me of Newport Boulevard, and I measured it. It's about 100 feet across from property line to property line. It's the same width. This is also -- we're at the Planning Commission, right? We're at a Planning Commission meeting. This is also a land use issue. It's not just the engineer's job. We need things. We need to zone and plan at all levels, through zoning, through specific plans, our overlays, our general plan. We need useful things within walking distance. We need housing choices mixed up. We need useful places to walk to so that we don't have to drive for every trip. This doesn't ruin any neighborhood. Every neighborhood in the city of Costa Mesa, this would be great. However, this would be -- this would fill the chambers, a proposal for something like this. And these are new builds. This is new construction. This is in South Carolina. This kind of goes in with point number one, too. Adopt design standards so that new buildings look nice. You look at this, and this is very inviting, but our policies and our rules prohibit this sort of thing. Lastly, to wrap up, we need the public realm to be nice. If we allow high-density projects but continue to maintain 8, 10-lane roads, 12-foot lanes on Harbor Boulevard, on Adams, on Baker, wherever, the best buildings in the world can't compensate for what this does. That's in Huntington. This one's another neighboring city. These guys obviously just gave up. Look how the building lands. It doesn't engage the street at all. Nobody wants to be walking here. This is not going to change. It can't evolve. This is not the kind of growth we want, and we need to start talking about these things if we don't want this sort of result. These are all Costa Mesa projects. This is what we've been doing. So this is a land use issue. I'm not just talking about cars and streets. We allow developments to spin around and face the inside of the property, and it's a both-and, right? We need the streets to be better, and we need private development to engage and shape those places, too. But we've allowed walls to be erected all over the city, and like I presented a few months ago, you can't change this. This is permanent. I Googled "nice street," and I was amused at a lot in common in what showed up. Just think about what these have in common. They're shaped. They're framed well. There's a sense of enclosure, pedestrian-scale lighting. There's not a lot of cars. If there are cars, they're obviously moving slowly, presence of people, windows, doors. There's a reason we spend so much money going to places like this and preserving places like this throughout the world. This is -- you just look at this picture, and the stress comes off. You think, oh, what a nice place to walk. I could take my guard down. I could -- I don't have to be worrying about cars running into me. You could hear the birds. You could hear bike bells. We even used to do this in America. It's Philadelphia, obviously. You say, okay, what about cars? We're planned around cars. Everybody has cars. This is not absolutely incompatible with cars. We can have cars, but we don't have to prioritize them. We have to stop prioritizing cars in all of our policy and land use decisions. Trees, big shade trees, go a long way in helping. So there's cities that are doing this. They're getting high density. They're getting a variety of housing types. Like we say, if this was in walking distance to your house, to your single-family home, to your townhome, this would be great. It's somewhere where you could walk to for dinner. You could have a glass of wine without having to worry about designated drivers. There's cars. You could get around by car if you want to, but it's not dominating the public realm. So I'm just going to leave you with this. This is a really great book. I don't want to give you too many resources, but this is just a good one. This is a kind of a Danish book that talks about how you could do density well so that the city remains soft, livable, green, quiet, like we want. That's all.
Okay, thank you, sir, very much. Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Commissioner Toller for that, always insightful information. I have a lot of reaction to it, but wouldn't take the time tonight to do that. But thank you for your presentation. I would also like to echo the chair's concern about the gym noise issue. I believe our homeowner has already left. One thing that she mentioned that struck me particularly interesting was the start time of the juice bar being coincident with the gym and being 6 a.m. I recognize the challenge of measuring noise, volume, densities, but if there's any noise before 6 a.m., to me, that would almost seem to be a by-definition issue. So I appreciate that the staff is working on this. Second thing, and related to housing, tonight might not be an opportunity to do this, but I'm interested in knowing the status of the HCD certification of our housing element, and I'm specifically interested in what are the actual sticking points standing in the way between us and them providing that certification. So if that's something that is easy to update tonight, great. If not, maybe a separate briefing at a future meeting would be nice. And then lastly, I want to give a shout-out to our Costa Mesa Fire Department. So easy to take these guys for granted, guys and gals, for granted. You don't have any problems. You don't see them. You do have a problem, they show up roaring down the street, and I've got a couple of neighbors on my street that have needed their help over the last several years, and every time they roll up, I feel glad that they're there. Well, this past week, one of these neighbors, Dorothy Robbins is her name, achieved her 100th birthday, and she had been in the hospital the day before because the fire department had shown up, and paramedics the day before because she had a concern that prompted her to call them out. She got out of the hospital the next day after her birthday, 2:00 in the afternoon, just in time for what had been planned as a 3:00 birthday party. 100 pink flamingos in her front yard, relatives from all over the country showed up. Her mantle had hundreds of cards and well wishes from all over the country. And while this was going on, guess who rolls down the street but the fire department? Engine 81 and Battalion Chief Coats. They show up. They show up, they got flowers, they posed for pictures, they sing "Happy Birthday", and I just couldn't picture a better city to live in than Costa Mesa when you see that kind of community connection between our public servants and the residents they serve. They showed up to celebrate Dorothy's birthday, and it was very heartwarming. And they did it without being prompted, and that was really special. And I wish they were here. There are photos, you probably will see them, maybe in future city news blasts, but I just wanted to shout out to Engine 81 and Battalion Chief Coats. Really special. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lee, if you want to take a stab at status on the housing element to the extent that you can this evening, and then maybe we can anticipate a, maybe a more detailed report later meeting?
Sure, I'm happy to. And I'll, I'll prepare for a more detailed status update at our next meeting. The cities, the city council adopted the housing element in February of this year, and we subsequently submitted that draft to the state for their certification. They reviewed it and provided a comment letter in April, and since then, we've been going back and forth with the state on several particular points that were raised in their letter and trying to come to exact wording that we can resubmit to the state and receive their certification. So that's the status, and I'm happy to provide more detail at our next meeting. Thank you.
That would be great if we would, thank you very much. So I'm going to bring up another topic related to housing and piggybacks a little bit on what Mr. Humphrey was talking about. I would, you know, I recall that the city council and some discussions earlier this year had talked about the importance of beginning a process of exploring an inclusionary housing ordinance in the city. I, I know we're extraordinarily busy trying to get a certification on our housing element. I know we're extraordinarily busy processing CUPs for cannabis storefronts and a variety other, you know, issues that we're dealing with. But I would like to, and this is just coming from the chair, I would like to request that at least be communicated through Ms. Lee's office to the mayor's office and the city manager's office that, from my perspective, I would like to at least have a joint study session of the city council and the planning commission on it and begin a discussion of an inclusionary housing ordinance, at least identifying frameworks, looking at sample cities like Irvine, which is, I think, had one in place since about 2003. But I'd like that to happen before the year is out, hopefully October, November timeframe, to at least begin the discussion. Because I, I think it's important, particularly from HCD's perspective, understanding what it said about impediments in its comment letter to us. I think we need to begin having a serious conversation and a policy discussion about implementing ultimately an inclusionary housing ordinance so we can affirmatively further fair housing, which is the major goal of the six-cycle housing element under HCD. So I'd just like to communicate that. I would, I would strongly suggest we have that joint study session on inclusionary housing next month or the following month. So those are just my comments for tonight. Okay, so with that, we move to a consent calendar. We have none tonight. So we'll move to public hearings and start with public hearing item number one. Anna, could you please read that into the record?
Public hearing item number one, planning application 21-7 for a conditional use permit to allow off-site valet parking and outdoor seating for an existing restaurant, Trenta Pizza &amp; Cucina, located at 1661 Superior Avenue, Suite C and D, and zoning application 19-50ZA-17-16A1 for a minor, minor conditional, conditional use permit to modify previously approved conditions of approval for restaurant operations. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Commissioner Rojas, any ex parte communications to report?
No, sir, I didn't.
Commissioner Erath?
Yes, sir, I had, I held a 15-minute conversation with Marco Palazzo.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Vivar?
No, sir.
Commissioner Toller?
No.
Commissioner Russell?
No, no.
Vice Chair Zick?
I simply made a visit to the site and the surrounding area.
Okay, thank you very much. I've had no communication, so we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Arios.
Good evening, Chair Diarcle, Commissioners. Justin Arios, Associate Planner. As described, the project involves both a request for a conditional use permit to allow off-site valet parking and a request for outdoor seating, as well as a minor conditional use permit request to amend the previously approved, previous approval to modify the conditions of approval for restaurant operations. The subject property is located along Superior Avenue between West 16th Street and West 17th Street. Physical onsite improvements include an 8,446-square-foot, single-story, multi-tenant building with a total of 25 parking spaces on the site and two points of ingress/egress located along Superior. This slide provides site photos of the project site, both with the proposed outdoor patio and without, in addition to the proposed off-site valet parking location. The property is zoned to MG, General Industrial, and has a general plan land use designation of light industrial. The subject property is also located within the 19 West Urban Plan. The project site is surrounded by properties with the same zoning designation, and there are nearby residential communities that abut the project site, developed pursuant to approved urban plans. On June 22, 2017, the zoning administrator approved minor conditional use permitZA-17-16, allowing a deviation from shared parking requirements for a proposed restaurant with more than 300 square feet of public seating area, including a 250 square-foot outdoor patio. Approval was based on the offset hours of operation of the restaurant with the other businesses onsite and was conditioned with specific hours of operation. On November 30 of 2020, during the COVID pandemic, a temporary use permit, or TUP, for outdoor dining was approved for the current restaurant. The TUP approved the use of four onsite parking spaces to accommodate an additional 842 square feet of outdoor patio seating area. The TUP will expire on December 31, 2022, unless extended by the city council. The seating area is improved with artificial turf, portable planters, and empty wine barrels separating the seating area from the drive aisle, as well as portable propane heaters. The item before you is a request to permanently allow the outdoor seating approved by the TUP. The proposal includes removing the outdoor seating area when not in use by the restaurant, making three of the existing parking spaces available for use by the other tenants onsite during non-restaurant hours of operation. The restaurant also proposes to modify their previously approved hours of operation, including the use of outdoor seating area. Here is a site plan for the project site. The red shaded areas were previously approved by the minor conditional use permit, and the green shaded areas are the proposed project, the adjacent suite and outdoor TUP seating Based on the shared parking demand calculation for the project site and current mix of uses, a total of, a total required parking, the, I'm sorry, the total required parking is 38 parking spaces. A total of 22 parking spaces would be available onsite when the enlarged outdoor patio is operational, and 25 spaces would be available when only the 250-square-foot smaller patio is being used. The applicant is requesting planning commission approval to compensate for the deficient parking by use of off-site valet parking. The pro, the proposed off-site valet parking is proposed on the property located at 1645 Superior Avenue. The site is currently occupied by Beach City's Car Wash and is located approximately 200 feet to the south of the restaurant. The existing hours of operation of the Car Wash are 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, seven days a week, and the site would provide an additional 39 parking spaces when the Car Wash is closed. A general summary of the proposed valet operation plan is included in the report. During restaurant operations, with the exception of weekend lunchtime, the restaurant would maintain a total of 61 valet parking spaces for customer, which complies with code requirements. With regard to the proposed weekend lunchtime hours, the restaurant would maintain 25 onsite parking spaces, which complies with requirements. The slide here lists the code required findings for the proposed project, specifically the conditional use permit. And staff believes that the proposed project conforms with the required findings because the site will be in conformance with code required parking requirements for the restaurant and would maintain a surplus of customer parking with the implementation of onsite parking. The valet parking plan has been reviewed by the city's transportation division and would be implemented by a professional valet service operator. The existing restaurant is a complimentary use to the area, including adjacent, including the adjacent residential uses, and does not generate noise or parking impacts unusual for an industrially-zoned property. Furthermore, the outdoor seating, which is essentially the same as proposed, as the proposed project, do not adversely impact surrounding uses. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA, under CEQA Guidelines, Section 15301 for existing facilities, and approve planning application 21-07 and zoning application 1950, subject to conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Arios, very much for your presentation. Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions to staff?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Erath?
Thank you, Chair Diarcle. Just one. What happens in the event the, the, thank you, Mr. Arios, by the way, that was a great presentation. What happens in the event that the surrounding businesses want to augment their hours of operation that run into Trenta's? Would we have to recalculate the parking if, in the event that that happened?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. Anytime there's a, a shared parking of this manner, when there's a multi-tenant center, essentially the hours of operation for each tenant are set and considered when we approve something like this request. So the idea is that the property owner is well aware of what the hours of operation are, and they're a party to this request. Therefore, it's the property owner's oversight of his tenants ultimately that manages business hours of operation. But that is the assumption, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Lee. That's all for me, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Vivar, do you have questions to staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do just a quick question. Thank you, Mr. Arios, for the presentation. Quickly, are you guys able to maybe illustrate other, examples of other restaurants around the city that are doing a similar thing with valet parking offsite?
I'll have to think a little more on that question, but I think restaurants, for example, at locations like The Camp and The Lab have valet parking, a few other that I can think of. Let me think on that a bit more, and I'll come back.
Yeah, the approvals that are coming to my mind are mostly related to the event center type of projects that we would see the valet offsite parking propose.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Toller, any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Russell?
Not at this time.
Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions. Still trying to wrap my head around this. Several aspects of this that I'm not clear on. Let me start with the initial MCUP. The comment in the staff report on page two is that that was, that a deviation was granted based on offset hours with the other businesses onsite. And when I look at the hours of operation for the restaurant, Monday through Friday, 8 to 12, 4 to 11, I can only help but think that the existing businesses must have only operated between noon and 4:00 PM. Would that be the case?
So this was based on the shared parking demand, which takes into account the mix of tenants, existing tenants, and then the peak demands for those type of uses. So that's kind of generally how that calculation comes out.
So maybe I can elaborate a little bit. It's, it's not only offset business hours, but it's also the peak times of services for the types of uses that are onsite. And that is a shared parking demand analysis that was essentially incorporated into the code by reference, and so can be used as a proxy for code requirements.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And in terms of the deviation, the deviation, if I'm right about this, was based on the fact that there would have been a requirement for 38 parking spaces, and the site had something less than that? Is that what the deviation was?
For the current request, yes.
No, for the previous MCUP.
Previous MCUP, it was deficient in parking because of the restaurant use required at the 10 per thousand rate. So because there wasn't surplus to accommodate that, they had to demonstrate that they operated uniquely, and it was the offset hours of operation they proposed.
Got it, okay. And then another question I have, and these aren't in a particular order. The temporary use permit expires at the end of this year, and you indicated that, unless it's extended by city council. Do we have any indication at this point in time whether they intend or not intend to extend it?
I can answer that. Vice Chair Zick? The council has indicated to staff that, then have requested that staff bring back essentially a permanent ordinance that would allow for continued outdoor dining of some sort. I think one of the benefits of the pandemic, if you can call it that, was this idea of outdoor dining was really promoted at some point, and we found that outdoor dining could be accommodated without very much impact to the community and had some benefit. So the council, recognizing that, asked staff to return to the council with a permanent ordinance that would address that topic. Our intent is to bring that ordinance forward. It would be to the planning commission as well as the council, and if staff needed a little bit more time after the end of this year in order to complete that process, we would ask council to extend these permits until the point that a permanent ordinance is adopted.
And in that case, the, the, as opposed to a CUP, which is a right which runs with the land, that approach to permitting the use, to allowing the use, would be simply based on their current business operation?
We haven't quite worked out exactly the mechanism for how it would move forward, but I expect it to be different than a conditional use permit or a minor conditional use permit, which is the process that we already have in place. Restaurants are allowed to request outdoor dining with a minor conditional use permit under today's code, and the issue there is that they are also required to provide parking based on that expanded square footage. And so there's already a process in place to do that. So I think what we've learned is that we're looking for something that's a little bit more administrative in nature and perhaps doesn't run with the land and is a little bit more specific to actual business operations. So that's the intent.
Okay. And then I have a question about outdoor patios in general as it relates to restaurants. Have a couple of new restaurants in the Mesa Verde Center that have outdoor patios as part of the building design. My question is, do we have specific design guidelines that a business would be required to follow if they were building a brand-new restaurant with a brand-new outdoor patio area?
No, we don't have any design guidelines for a proposed outdoor patio.
No requirements that the patio area be protected from adjacent parking? No requirement for...
Aside from building code and other plan check requirements, there's no specific zoning requirements for proposed outdoor patios. there's no specific zoning requirements for proposed outdoor patios?
Okay. I was curious about the checklist that was filled out for the temporary use permit. And I don't think we have somebody from the fire department here, but the third section of that... And we don't have any handwritten page number that I can refer you to, but it is the temporary use permit application that I'm referring to. There's a section that has this title that says tent, canopies, or other shade structures. And then below that, it simply asks whether you'll be using a tent or not. And the permit has the box check "No" that they won't be using a tent. And because the title of the thing says tents, canopies, and other shade structures, I understand from that clearly there's a distinction. And clearly, they have canopies there. Why would we care whether or not... If we're only asking if they have a tent or not, why is there an indication of seeming interest as to whether there are canopies or other shade structures? Why would we have that as part of the permit?
Commissioner Zick, I can actually help answer that question. When we were doing the TUP, I actually learned from the fire department that anytime you have a tent or canopy or any sort of shade awning of a certain square footage, it does... Certain fire code requirements do kick in. I mean, so we had to put that in the application to, A, know if people were intending to do that. And so what was the size? Because there is a size, like I said, kind of threshold for the fire department as well as the building department as it relates to the fire and building code.
And I'm assuming that they have reviewed the existing canopies that are out there, and everything's copacetic from their standpoint?
Correct.
Then I want to make sure I'm understanding the timing of the valet parking. That... Am I correct that it is only going to be occurring Monday through Friday, supporting their new hours of 5:00 to 9:00 PM, and then 5:00 to 10:00 PM on Friday? Is that the only time the valet is available is in the evenings, Monday through Friday?
As well as the evenings on Saturday and Sunday. Essentially, they're proposing to utilize valet operations when they're open and when the car wash isn't operating.
I got it. You're right. On top of page five, it says, "With the exception of weekend lunchtime," so weekend dinnertime valets. Okay, I...
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Okay, I'm a little unclear, and it probably doesn't matter exactly, but the number of parking spaces on the site. When I was there, I couldn't get to 25. And I'm not sure if the site started with 25 or if it started with 28. And I'm confused about that because there's an indication in the staff report that the site complies with 25 parking space requirement. And is that with the initial outdoor patio? That there still are 25?
Yes, that is correct.
Wow. I couldn't see where they were. Okay.
I'm sorry. Were you referring the temporary, enlarged outdoor patio?
No, I was even making and counting for that, and I still couldn't get to 25. Okay. And then with regard to that expanded area, so there's an indication that the parking there will be available certain periods of the time. And it would be anticipated that cars would be parking up on the green astroturf, correct?
Yes, correct. And in one of the site photos provided, you can see that it is being utilized as parking.
And people are going to recognize that that's okay to park there?
Yes.
Not like driving up on your neighbor's front yard. This would look like it's a legitimate parking space to use.
Yeah, and if you'd like, we can add a condition to have them add signage to make it clear that the parking can be utilized there.
All right. I think that's all I've got for now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions. We'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward, please. Either podium is fine? Good evening, sir. If you could give us your name, and then I will ask you if you've read the conditions of approval and if you agree with them.
Good evening. Yes, I did. My name is Marco Palazzo, and I am one of the two owners of the Trenta Pizza Cucina Restaurant. And first of all, I would like to say thank you very much to this commission for your time. I know you're really busy people, so thank you so much. If you don't mind, I would like to share with you briefly the story of this restaurant.
Please, sir, go ahead.
So we opened Trenta Pizza Cucina February 2019. And after one year and one month of operation, we got so scared because of the pandemic. So at the same time, back in March 2020, we were amazed by the incredible support we got from the Ciro Costa Mesa, from the resident of Costa Mesa. Our customers were to make sure this little family business would have survived the pandemic was supported with donations to the hospital, the first responders, purchase of many, many gift cards to make sure we were doing fine, and also huge, and it's a huge, to-go orders. But what we love about those, like really scary time, was that we did not lay off one of our employees. And this makes really, really happy because maintaining all the great workers in our environment was huge for us. We are super, super grateful to the community and to the Ciro Costa Mesa for the great support we're having one more time. We feel so blessed for that. And we feel that we are providing a unique service to the Ciro Costa Mesa. This restaurant was born from a dream of two friends, raised born in Italy, who decides to move to Costa Mesa 10 years ago because they want to eat pizza. And with all due respect to the local pizzeria, we love and respect all our, like, restaurants. We have great restaurants in Costa Mesa. But my decisions and my business partner, Giorgio, was to bring an authentic experience, an authentic Italian restaurant in Costa Mesa. And I feel that we are doing a great job. So one more time, thank you so much for this opportunity. I have, if you don't mind, I have a little request to this commission. Is it possible to modify the hours of operation during the weekdays, which at the moment are 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, into 11:30 AM to 2:30 PM? That will be one hour less for us in terms of time. But it will be crucial for us to operate lunchtime and one more time to keep all our employees working with us. Otherwise, we must discontinue lunch service during weekdays. I know we're dealing with numbers and criteria, but me, as a brand-new restaurateur, for me, I care more about my people, my workers that I want to keep with us as much as possible. Thank you so much.
Yes, so Vice Chair Zick just asked me if you could repeat the requested hour change. I think you're saying you want to shift to 11:30 to 2:30 for lunch on weekdays in addition to the weekend?
Correct, on weekdays. We already have approved from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, but we cannot operate from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM for lunch. So that's why 11:30 to 2:30 for us would be the right hours of operation for us.
Okay, commissioners, thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you... Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, I just understood the hours are shifting later. Is that correct?
So the request of the applicant, Commissioner Rojas, you know, under the existing... Looks like the, under the MCUP, the 1716, previous hours of operations were 8:00 AM to noon, Monday through Friday. He's requesting a modification instead of 8:00 AM to noon, 11:30 AM to 2:30, Monday through Friday, as well as Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, so that's a reduction of one hour, which is what he mentioned initially. Because from 8:00 to noon being four, you know, 11:30 to 2:30 being three.
Yeah, correct.
And that's what I'm understanding correctly.
My guess is the previous restaurant served breakfast.
Understood.
That's just a guess.
Okay, that's the question I wanted to make sure absolutely that was clear in my mind. That's it. I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Erath?
Thank you.
Questions of the applicant?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Palazzo, thank you so much for your presentation. It was a pleasure speaking to you this weekend. I think first off, I want to ask staff, based on your request for the modification for hours of operation, do we need to recalculate the parking demand?
So the issue wouldn't be calculating the parking demand. It's providing the parking that is required. So that 38 parking would need to be provided somewhere else?
I think, yeah.
The difficulty is that the car wash operates during the week during the lunchtime hours. So another location or some other solution would need to be resolved, found, or proposed in order to boost those lunchtime hours?
I'm under the impression that using the car wash outside of their regular hours of operation is what allowed this particular, you know, item to move forward?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I think I'll also ask a different question that came up following the vice chair's comments. Would city council's proposed ordinance for outdoor dining retroactively change this particular CUP potentially? Like, would... Or would this be one-off?
I can start, and then maybe our city attorney can weigh in as well. The intention is that it wouldn't. It's essentially a standalone ordinance that would apply moving forward. Although certainly, I suppose theoretically could be some provisions that the new ordinance would address that, you know, weren't addressed in the CUP, for example. And maybe there could be some combination there.
Yeah, we wouldn't anticipate, you know, that an ordinance would change the terms and conditions of an existing CUP since it runs with the land. The only time that we might do something like that is where we had an amortization period, if there was some specific requirement that we gave them time to come into conformity with, that we thought was essential to health and safety. But typically, ordinance, whatever the new ordinance is, is not going to affect existing CUPs.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Barlow. Thank you, Ms. Lee. I think I'll leave it there for now. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Vivardi, have questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I do. So thank you for your presentation about your restaurant. So I think I ate there once. I can't remember. But so just so I know, the only thing kind of delineating the eating area from where the cars drive is just empty wine jugs or something?
I'm really sorry. I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry.
So...
My apology.
I believe, Mr. Vivar... Commissioner Vivar, you're talking about the barrels that delineate the parking area from the...
Right. So the barrels are the only thing that are kind of separating the people from the vehicle thoroughfare area, right?
No, we also, besides the barrels, we have some planters.
Planters, okay.
Yes, that they protect the seating area from the rest of the parking lot. We follow the procedure that were presented to us for the temporary use of permit for the pandemic.
So if you were to keep your same operations, then you would keep using those planters and keep using... Moving them back and forth to make sure that there's safety for the people eating at your site?
Absolutely, yes. We do, we always move the planters, and we make sure that the seating area is safe for our customers.
Sure. Okay, well, grazie, grazie mille. I think that's it. I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everyone, for your answering my questions. I think I'm good with this.
Okay. Commissioner Toller?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Russell? Questions of the applicant?
I have just one question you may or may not be able to answer. Do you have any sense of how many people from the local communities walk over there, like, rough percentage?
I do not have a precise percentage, but I can tell you that we have at least 50 to 70, like, residents from the apartments behind that come, like, once a week or once every week and have dinner at Trenta.
That's really the only question I had. The other people asked the questions I had, so thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, questions of the applicant?
Yeah, just a clarification on hours of operation. I apologize for my confusion on this. So right now, you're operating under an MCUP that during the week, you're only allowed to be open 8:00 to 12, and then 4:00 to 11. So are you currently closed at noon? So people show up at 1:00 for lunch, they can't...
To be honest with you, we're operating for lunch, 11:30 to 2:30.
You're doing that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, okay, appreciate the honesty. And then, to be clear, with the modification that is proposed with the hours of this application, you would no longer be open between 8:00 in the morning and 11:30, correct? You would only open at 11:30, not earlier than that?
Correct. I will open 11:30. Not... I mean, these hours, if you allow me, the hours from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, they were submitted by a different group that was trying to have a different project in the...
Understand. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so I have no questions for you right now, sir. I'm going to have some questions for staff after I open public comment. But so you can have a seat.
Thank you.
We'll have you back up. Thank you very much. So we'll open public comment portion of the public hearing. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Yes, sir?
First of all, thank you all for your service. It's truly appreciated. My name is Zach Munt, and I'm a Mesa Verde resident. We also have the business right next to Trenta. My wife is the business owner. She's in New York right now. But I am on the board of Creme Collective. And we use the parking spaces on the grass in the morning. We know that those are our spots, and we love having Trenta as a part of our community. The environment that they provide is fantastic. They have such amazing food. It's like a real special little place. When you come in there at night and see how happy everybody is, and it's truly a wonderful destination for people that come in and for our local community who choose to walk over, ride their bikes. On any given day or night, you'll see tons of bikes parked out front, which is really a Costa Mesa thing. And we just love having them in our community and in our business. We're share-building, and it's wonderful. I just wanted to be here to share my support.
Thank you, sir, very much. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and ladies and gentlemen of the commission and Costa Mesa staff. My name is Chris Riley. I am a resident of Costa Mesa. I live at Topanga Canyon, right behind the restaurant in question. I think I'm here, albeit maybe this has already been sunk already with this parking discussion and the change in times because that proposed parking solution is a fully-fledged car wash system that works from early in the morning to well past the stated hours and certainly at lunchtime. So there is no 25 parking spots on that. I question that, and we'll happily meet with your staff in there. We're taking seven out. I've provided photographs to the council both today and several months, if not two years ago. That Trenta was utilizing the full width, not four parking spaces, seven, which exacerbates the parking far greater. I think the concept that there is no impact to surrounding properties that this commission approved when master bedrooms, major living spaces look over that from a noise and light pollution... when master bedrooms, major living spaces look over that from a noise and light pollution is maybe a, a point that commission staff could actually go and revisit. I understand it's difficult to do that past the evening hours, but I have provided photographs and have video for that. You know, that property behind generates about $1.7 million worth of property tax for the, the city. And I think we should have a voice in the development, moving from a small restaurant, which was all internal as we bought our properties, to going outside for COVID, for obvious reasons, we support that. But as with most restaurants, they've now gone back inside, and that restaurant needs to. There is no safety factor whatsoever from cars to pedestrians. The proposed valet is actually operational. Your council members have told, your staff have told the facility to stop valeting. They took the word valet off the system, but still run valet today. That triples the car movements from that facility. The proposal is now to go past the entrance of West 17th, and you will generate an awful lot of traffic past a very difficult ingress and egress for a large number of residents. I believe that the presentation that's been made is incorrect, and again, there's photographs and, and evidence in, in the file that I've given, and Anna was very helpful today, thank you. They have a wish to take over the whole parking system and have a full plaza in that, like Italy, which is great. I'm married to an Italian girl myself. That would mean parking would be further exacerbated and valet would occur on Superior. We in West 17th are unable to get gates approved because of emergency services access down Malibu, which is a very, very difficult turn, narrow. All of those ambulances, fiber gate, and the proposed valet parking facility.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in chambers wish to speak to this item? Okay, Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom or telephone?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Ryan Hanisco, you may provide your public comment.
Hi, everybody. Ryan Hanisco here, 621 Cardiff Reef, directly overlooking the proposed valet. I just wanted to talk specifically about the valet. I'm one of those regular customers to Trenta and love the restaurant. But on the, the valet side, you know, currently there's some valet and current parking there where they utilize the front half of that lot. You know, there is, you know, some noise from that, but it's relatively contained. With the noise from the car wash and operation, you know, we're very aware of the, the noise that comes from, you know, cars being turned on and off, doors being left open, beeping, you know, keys unlocking the car and having them chirp. And with the construction of our units, we hear that, you know, directly through the fence. The parking on the back spots 1 through 10 are literally 20 feet from the master bedrooms of that row of houses. And so I look directly down into the car wash and, you know, would hear that all night. I know that they're proposing that from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., but the restaurant closing at 10:00 p.m., people wrapping up, it's going to be 11:00 p.m. before they actually finish and close that down, and that would extend the hours because people might come in at, you know, 9:45 and, you know, finish eating late. So I think, you know, there'll just be an ongoing noise nuisance, and I propose if they do anything, only utilize the front half of that, if at all. So thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else?
Jen Tanaka, you may provide your public comment.
Hi, yeah, my name is Jen Tanaka. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa. I'm also a frequent customer of Trenta. Love the business. I also really love the outdoor dining. I think that it does a lot to add character to that area and also liveliness that actually can help, you know, bring a little, just like I said, a little more life to that area. So I'm just wanted to call in and support the business and its proposal. You know, COVID and everything else has made it incredibly difficult to, you know, run a business. I think that the proposal here has, you know, a lot of merit. I think that they are doing their best to maximize the space for their customers. You know, it's a great way to turn some space that, you know, otherwise would be used for cars and just cars sitting there and put people in them. I think that's great for Costa Mesa. It's a wonderful step forward. And, you know, it's, it's, I understand that there are, you know, people who are concerned, and I understand that completely. But, you know, it's been a while on this, this very meeting and, you know, lots of work from staff for ultimately what is, seems like not a huge big difference. And the valet in particular, you know, I think some of that's already happening. It sounds like the, the timing change is already happening. This is just normal, you know, adjustments that are in the ordinary course of business. So I think that these all seem incredibly reasonable, and I hope that, you know, you guys consider it carefully. But it seems to me like a business that's well worth supporting and, you know, at least giving them a chance to, to keep trying to, to make this area just so much cooler and nicer, and I wholly support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Tommy Stevenson, you may provide your public comment.
Hi there. We are residents at 684 Malibu. We are, we attend, we go to Trenta maybe a little bit too often. We absolutely love it. It brings a, it's an integral part of our community, and we wouldn't know what we would do without them. So we love Giorgio and we love Marco, and we really appreciate them.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Caller 868, you may provide your public comment.
Caller 868.
There is nobody else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, did they hang up?
They're not unmuting.
If you press star six on your phone to unmute yourself. Okay. All right.
I'm...
Oh, there you go.
Listening in.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I'm just listening in.
Oh, okay. Thank you for listening in. All right, we'll close public comment then. Sir, if you'd like to come up and offer any comments to any of the people that spoke this evening on your application?
Yes, sir, thank you. And I would like to comment. I think it's the same person, Ryan Anisco, that wrote a public email and is concerned, which I totally respect about the noise around is, is a resident of 621 Cardiff. So his residence is located right behind the car wash. I'm sure about one thing, that once we're going to have the valet parking attendant running operation, we're going to resolve the noise problem because the attendant of the car wash will, will use an area of the car wash, not close to the apartment. And also, in this email, the person is concerned about some of the cars playing music. And I already addressed all this comment, and I found, and I sent this email to, to the valet company. And they, they're sure they're not gonna make sure they're gonna play music. They're gonna just move the car from the parking area back to the restaurant. So I'm sure that actually having some professional company running operation is going to improve the noise situation at the parking lot. And I'm, I'm sorry, my apology. I should have asked for an assistive listening audio. I have a hearing aid. If I put it on, it's gonna conflict with that. I, I didn't quite listen all the comment of the gentleman about the public comment. And I, I heard one thing. It is like we, that we are running the valet parking operation. As much as I know, we are not running valet parking operation. So what he said was not correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
I'm, I'm sorry. I would like to add just one thing in regards in, in regarding the, the weekdays, hours of operation. During the weekdays for lunch, we use a really restricted area of the restaurant because as you can see in our application, we reduce all the outside, the outdoor patio. So we do not need 38 parking spot to run lunch operation. The dinner operation has a much, much bigger volume than the lunch operation. So during lunch operation, we just need a small amount of parking lot, not 38. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm gonna bring, I have a, I have a question. I want to explore that a little bit with staff. So absent the application in front of us, Mr. Arios or Ms. Lee, under the existing M C U P, the restaurant's allowed to operate Monday through Friday from 8:00 to noon and then from 4:00 to 11:00, and Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that includes 300 square feet of outdoor space? Okay. And in that example alone, under the existing M C U P, is the existing parking sufficient?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay. So theoretically, then his request to operate lunch on weekdays from 11:30 to 2:00, provided he keeps his outdoor space to 300 feet, he's still okay?
Um, that would need to be determined again. We would need to rerun the shared parking, utilize the, the updated shared parking with the updated current mix of tenants. The previous approval took into account the existing tenants onsite and the space that they occupied, which is not the same as currently.
But is the M C U P still operative?
The M C P approval is, yes.
I think the nuance here is that, I think what we're saying is that the tenants have changed since the M C U P was originally approved, and so therefore the calculation has changed. So if you rerun it with the current tenant mix and the hours of operation that they operate today instead of what was there in 2017 when this was approved, it will not, it, it will not match.
So theoretically, he could serve brunch under the current M C U P from 10:00 to noon, and he'd be okay? With a 300-foot patio space?
Well, I guess the issue here is that the other tenants are different now. So if you, if you consider that, the answer is no, they couldn't.
But I'm, I'm confused. The M C U P is still operative?
It is, but it's also based on the assumptions of what tenants were in place in 2017.
So the conditions of approval for that M C U P took into account what the tenant mix was?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'm clear. All right. Okay, that's all I had. Commissioner, Vice Chair Zick, you seem to have questions for staff?
I do, and it kind of follows some of the same line of thinking. With regard to the M C, the request in this application and the M C U P only, the only requested change is hours of operation. Correct?
Correct. So we are essentially updating the previous approval to what would be approved.
Correct. Now, in that existing M C U P, was there a condition of approval similar to the condition of approval that we find standard in many of these applications that talks about, and I'm referring now to the conditions of approval of this application, Exhibit B. It says if parking problems arise, the restaurant shall institute appropriate operational measures to minimize, minimize or mitigate the problem, including but not limited to reducing hours of operation, obtaining entitlement for additional offsite or valet parking. The question is, does the existing M C U P have language like that, which obligates the operator to solve any parking problems that arise?
Most likely it would be. That is a standard condition we include with any request to deviate from parking requirements, but I can confirm, once I check the staff report for that previous approval.
So with that in mind, if the mix of businesses has changed, which would change the calculus of the shared parking requirements under the existing M C U P, if he didn't change hours of operation, all he would simply need to do is implement some new parking strategy to solve the parking problem. Correct?
Could you re-ask that question?
The M C P he's currently operating under would still be valid. He would simply need to manage the parking problem that has since arisen, based on the condition of approval that would have required him to do that.
Yeah, I think if I understand your question, yes, under the prior CUP, he would be obligated to address any parking problems that arise. But the other thing is that the M C U P is granted on the assumption of the mix of uses that are there on the site, just like this one today. So it's an assumption that's built in to the shared parking analysis that we consider all tenants that are on the site and not only one.
Okay, and so if we simply granted an approval to modify the M C U P tonight, I'm only focused on the M C P with this question. If we modified the M C U P tonight with just the hours of operation, what you're saying is you would need to recalculate what the parking requirement would be. That calculation would obviously show a shortfall, but that shortfall would be mitigated by the condition of approval that already exists that obligates him to mitigate that shortfall, utilizing the valet parking, which he already has a, a plan for.
So our zoning administrator considers essentially what the plan is to mitigate those parking impacts, and as part of his determination decides whether that plan is adequate. We would not rely solely on a condition of approval that says if there's an issue, then fix it. The expectation is that if there's a change in hours of operation, that there would be a plan to address the parking need, and then the condition of approval is there as belt and suspenders backup.
So let me be clear then. What's being asked of us tonight is a new M C U P or to modify the existing M C U P?
The request is for proposed offsite valet. And as a result, we would be modifying the previous M C U P to update the hours of operation that are being proposed with this application.
So I guess I'm not clear why we would need to be involved in approving an offsite valet if there's a condition of approval that already obligates him to do that?
So the, the condition of approval requires that the applicant resolve any issues that may result, resolve or arise. The solution for valet or offsite parking does require approval of a conditional use permit, which is the item that is before you tonight. At this moment, they do not have any approval for offsite or for valet parking. So that would need to get entitled.
So if you got an M C U P, and part of that says you gotta solve parking problems if they come up, and if your solution says, I want to do valet parking, at that point, now you need a CUP?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you for that.
So maybe I can ask, boil it down and ask a clarifying question. So just for grins, let's say the council, oh, council, the commission tonight, God, would I ever want to be there? Let's say the commission tonight said, okay, we'll grant you the M C U P for 11:30 to 2:30 for lunch, Monday through Friday, Saturday and Sunday, under the condition that you need to submit a parking management plan that has to be approved by the zoning administrator, their director. And if you can't come up with a satisfying traffic, a parking management plan that satisfies the director, the, you, you don't get to operate at those hours. I'm asking that more of staff. Is that, is that a reasonable process?
Chair, I think so. Something that we've discussed is that obviously the, the weekday lunchtime hours don't work for the current calculation of parking.
Correct.
But for example, if an applicant applied to say amend the CUP to add those hours and worked with staffs to do some parking counts onsite that showed pretty consistently that the parking demand isn't there during weekday lunchtime. From a practical perspective, that would be an avenue to move forward, as an example. And that would typically go to the zoning administrator. So if you'd like to add a condition like that... So if you'd like to add a condition like that and forward it to the zoning administrator for a decision, I think that's appropriate.
So we could do that in the context of his application to modify the MCP? In other words, okay, well, in other words, I'll go back and reiterate what I said, that he can do 11:30 to 2:30, Monday through Sunday, but he can only do it Monday through Friday if he produces a parking management plan that's satisfactory to the director?
Yes, that's another, that's another approach. I think that would be okay.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions of staff? Any follow-up questions?
No, no, I'm, I'm asking myself the same questions you guys are asking, but you've all asked them well, so I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, how about you, Commissioner Erath?
Thank you, Chair. Kind of building off of Chair DeRico's comments a minute ago. How can I put it? Would those augmented hours, uh, those proposed augmented hours of operation not actually move forward until the parking management plan is approved?
That's correct.
Okay. So they would stay as is until, okay. I think that's it for me. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Vivar, you have any final questions for staff?
Yes, sir, one final question. Regarding the separation of the dining seating, or dining area from the vehicles, are the planters enough for safety? And if this becomes a long-term thing as, as being, as is being requested tonight, would the planters suffice as continued safety? Or would we require maybe some kind of more sturdy structure, even if temporary, between the, the vehicle and the dining area?
Are you asking more if whatever city council decides to adopt has any requirements related to safety, if that would be applied to this application?
Well, no, I'm, I'm more wondering, in this case, would the planters continue to be a safe thing for them to keep using into the future for safety? Are they enough, are planters enough to keep people safe?
Commissioner, if I could respond to that. The requirements that were in place at the time that the temporary use permit was approved, they were essentially temporary provisions. I imagine in the future, when the council adopts a permanent ordinance for outdoor dining, we'll address the specifics of, kind of what permanent improvements the council feels are appropriate in that particular instance. If the commission wants to add a condition of approval that discusses what type of enclosure barriers that you feel is appropriate, the city has no requirements related to outdoor dining. If there was a permanent structure that was required, it would go through our Building and Fire Department for review ultimately. But the city doesn't make any statements as to the safety or not safety of something on private property of this matter.
Do we know if the ordinance that the council is considering would require, would require some kind of standards for safety barriers?
Um, we don't know yet. It hasn't been developed. What I, what we had heard during the pandemic and what was moved forward ultimately was that just a physical barrier was enough. It didn't need to be, for example, a structural wall or anything of that magnitude. But ultimately, that's a policy decision for the city to determine whether it wants to include those types of requirements in a future ordinance.
I see. Okay. All right. I defer back to you, Chair. That's it for me.
Commissioner Toller, do you have any questions of staff before we close the public hearing?
No, you've untangled all of it for me. Thank you.
Okay. How about you, Commissioner Russell?
No.
Vice Chair, anything else? Okay. I have, I want one more clarifying question. So the only reason we would, we have to look at parking again under the existing MCP with the 300 square feet of patio area is because the tenants are different. Correct?
Just to clarify, it's 300 square feet or more of public seating area.
Okay.
The proposal did include a 250-square-foot outdoor patio. So it's more the public seating area that's provided that is a higher parking requirement for the food use that, that creates the deficiency in parking.
So total outdoor eating area with the 300 more, and you said he has 250 was the original, and he's asking for 800 more? So we're looking at 1,000 square feet?
Yeah, roughly, yes.
Sir, can I have you come back up to the podium again real quick? I want to ask you a question. Yep. And ma'am, if you want to help him out from a hearing perspective, please step forward.
Yes, sir, if you, if you don't mind, I would like to have.
Absolutely, no.
Yeah, because.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm missing something with my hair, sorry.
Please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Too much water, Paula, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Jill Hunt, and I'm here to assist Mr. Palazzo. Did you have a question for him?
I did, Ms. Hunt. So I wanted to ask him, uh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make, figure out a way to make this work. From a lunch perspective during the weekdays, can you make it work with the outdoor dining area being 300 square feet?
Could you do lunch only outside or only inside so that you don't have the additional use, which is what's triggering?
No, that, that wasn't the question. That wasn't my question. So he has outdoor patio space. Under the existing MCP is 300 feet or more. He's at 250, correct? I'm asking, do you need the 800 feet of patio space to do your lunches on the weekday?
No, sir. Weekdays, we can just use the 300 square feet.
Because that would make your parking problem a lot easier to solve.
Correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you. You may have a seat. Thank you.
Chair, if I could just ask staff to clarify the square footage of the patio space that was approved in the prior MCP?
Yes.
Plus the indoor seating space?
So I don't have the exact indoor seating area, but the inside of the space is 1,575 square feet, and the approved outdoor patio is 250 square feet in size.
Okay. So roughly 2,000 square feet total space?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing then. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Can I say something?
Yes.
We're willing to reduce the seating to make it work as long as we can stay open. One more time, my need is more for my employees and my customers than me as a, as a, as a business owner.
Understood, and I appreciate your looking out for your employees. I do, I really do. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Vice Chair, are you going to take a stab at a motion?
I'm gonna take a stab at it, knowing that if I don't get it right, you'll back.
We'll see.
So let me sort of state the first part. I want to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA Section 15304 Class 1, existing facilities, and deny the request for a CUP and approve the zoning application 19-50, MCP, modifying the hours of operation to be Sunday through Thursday, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and lunchtime hours, 11:30 to 2:30 p.m., all seven days, Sunday through Saturday, conditioned that the applicant provide, conditioned that the city recalculate the requirements based on the shared parking and that for any shortfall, the applicant provide a parking management plan to address that shortfall.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, who said that? Yes, Ms. Barlow, I, I think you might, you and I may have spotted the same problem, but go ahead.
In order to allow for the valet parking, our code requires the CUP.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm not approving valet parking.
Yes, but, but the applicant, in order to solve the parking problem, the applicant would either have to do offsite parking or valet parking. There isn't adequate parking onsite.
I, okay, so, so I, let me speak to my thought then about that. I'm ignoring that for now, because in my mind, the city council has an action that they need to take in lieu of us dealing with the CUP. If they extend the parking, uh, the temporary use permit while they work on an ordinance, then the CUP isn't needed at all, except as it might relate to valet parking. But if the solution is simply that there's parking just down the street that customers can use, and there's signage and direction, and they've got regular customers all the time that would know this, there might not be a need for valet parking and therefore maybe no need for a CUP. So all I'm trying to do is kick the can on valet parking in a CUP tonight and solve their operational problem, grant them approval to modify the hours of operation, which they're effectively operating under right now. That's my objective.
I understand, and, and, but, but to the extent that the applicant is planning on using a valet service to use parking at the car wash, if the CUP is denied, he will not be permitted to do that.
So essentially, he's in limbo until the council does something?
That would be correct.
Okay. Is there a second of the motion on the floor? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. So the chairs are gonna take a stab at a motion. And if we could clear the board on the motions, please. Thank you. So I'm, the chair's gonna move that we find the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA Section 15301 Class 1, existing facilities, an approved planning application 21-07, and zoning application 19-50, which is modification to ZA 17-16A1, subject to the following changes to the zoning application. And that would be to permit lunchtime operation Monday through Friday, 11:30 to 2:30, conditioned upon the submittal of a parking management plan to the director and requiring approval of the director. And then keep in place then the balance, oh, and I'm sorry, and to limit the outdoor dining space on that Monday through Friday, 11:30 to 2:30 to 250 square feet. And then the balance of the land use application would remain as presented by the applicant and by staff in the staff report. Is that clear?
Yes, understood.
Is there a second of the motion? Commissioner Vivar? Oh, wait, there's a second by, I'm sorry. Commissioner Erath seconded. Go ahead.
Have it if you want.
No, no, you can have it. I just want to make a clarification point is, and that, I think the language should be, or maybe, I'm not sure if it's specific enough in that they would be able to use their indoor area plus the 250-foot outdoor area, not simply the 20, 250-foot outdoor area. Is that correct?
No, that's, that's correct. So that, so the MCP would allow him to operate for lunch, 11:30 to 2:30, Monday through Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Saturday and Sunday, he can use the full patio area. Monday through Friday, it's 250 feet. Other than that, everything stays the same. And that includes, obviously, the indoor space.
The indoor, yes. Okay. All right, understood.
Okay. Commissioner Erath, you want to comment on the motion?
Thank you, Chair. I, I think it's a pretty reasonable approach, given what we learned this evening about the augmented hours of operation. And I, I think I like the additional guardrails of the applicant submitting the parking management plan subject to the director's approval as well. I think that's, that's well thought out. So I'm happy to support the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Rojas, do you have any comments on the motion?
No, thank you for untangling that, but no, we're good.
Yeah, my head's about to explode. So Commissioner Toller?
Sure, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'll say a few things. I, I am in support of the motion. I want to point out this pattern, if I may, that every item that comes before this commission is cars. Doesn't matter if we're talking about pizza, cannabis, new housing, new project, anything. All we talk about is cars, just like they dominate our public realm outside. They dominate every discussion up here. And we're talking about a pizza place. Pizza does not generate traffic. We talk about impacts, about car doors slamming, about car radios. This isn't pizza. This isn't a restaurant. This is car impacts. The nuisance that we're talking about is always cars, and it's not how it's supposed to be. We're talking uses here. This is a restaurant, a loved restaurant in Southern California where people want to eat outside, which is great, in what was once a sterile, gray, dead parking lot. We're bringing life outside. That's what people want. People enjoy it. So I happily, wholeheartedly support this motion, and I commend staff for finding creative ways to get around these Byzantine old, outdated, costly parking mandates that stifle business and hold our city back from being all that it could be. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Vivar, comments on the motion?
Yes, sir. I want to support the motion because I think that finding creative ways to use parts of the city that are not being used during certain, a certain amount of ti, a certain time of the day is, I think, a creative way to solve our parking issues. And I'd, I'd extend beyond just talking about this as a, as a parking issue, but as a, as a circulation issue. And more cars equals more risk to pedestrians and cyclists. So kind of approaching it from that standpoint and having the offsite parking available in order to minimize the sort of circling around of parking, of the parking lot. We all know what that's like, you know, South Coast Plaza during Christmas, circling around Enslie for parking. So finding that creative use for the car wash that's sitting there empty for most of the day, I think is great. And being able to allow local small business the opportunity to grow and to thrive, I, I fully support that. And of course, I think the provision that the applicant comes back to us, having studied the parking, is a good idea in that we will make sure that the adjacent businesses have a fair shot as well, because this is after all a multi-tenant shopping center, or retail center, rather. So I think this is a good idea, and so I'm more than happy to support the motion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Russell, any comments on the motion?
Just that I think this is a creative solution to a problem that's, that happens throughout the city, and I'm happy. to a problem that's, that happens throughout the city, and I'm happy to see that we're using parking in a different way. There's a lot of spaces that are not used at various parts of days, and if we can figure out ways to utilize those so that we don't have to build more parking, I think it's good. I was at the camp over the weekend, and it was, they were having a special event, it was really packed, but they had gotten an agreement with the Waters, which is really busy during the week, but on the weekends, they have this huge empty parking lot. And so I just encourage people that are, that have businesses, and to look at what's in your neighborhood that you can use to, to bring down some of the issues about traffic and parking and all that. So I'm going to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any comments on the motion? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very supportive of Marco's business. I'm very supportive of the community. The values is business. I'm very supportive of a vibrant business community, of which Marco is an integral part of. Why do we talk about cars? Because they're there. That's why we talk about cars. If we don't like talking about cars, make them go away. We talk about walkable, bikeable, well, clearly, people are not walkable, bikeable-ing to Marco's place, or we would not have a parking problem. But the fact is, it's a great restaurant, it's very popular, people drive there. So if you don't like that, I don't know what to say. The valet parking does solve the problem, and I agree that that is a solution to the parking problem. What I'm not comfortable about is granting a conditional use permit for a temporary use permit situation that the city council is in the middle of needing to deal with, because this isn't the only place where there's a temporary use permit in place, where somebody might like to get a conditional use permit that would run with the land, that would give them the right to use outdoor seating area. And I'm not convinced that the design, and this isn't a criticism, I'm not convinced that the design of this outdoor seating area, or other similar outdoor seating areas, is the way we really would want outdoor seating areas to exist for ongoing restaurant business. I think you'll get your approval, but you won't be getting my vote tonight for the conditional use permit. But good luck with your restaurant. It's a great one, and that's clear from the public comment. Okay, thank you, sir. So, you know, I think, I remember when I'm, my family and I, when our kids were all small, in 1993, we moved to Costa Mesa. And one of the reasons we moved to Costa Mesa was, and I'll never forget it, was when Gary Monahan was fighting like crazy for small businesses against ordinances and regulations that kind of made their lives really difficult, and, and I think, and this is in defense of staff, that they have ordinances they have to implement, that's their job, you know, it's, it's, but I, I think part of our job is to say, okay, well, are there ways of doing things that allow staff to do their job, and give small business owners a shot at making it, making what they want? And I'm, I'm trying to find the middle path here, and I think granting him the CUP for valet is the best shot he has to expand the hours of operations of his business, succeed even more, introduce his food to more people in Costa Mesa. I think that's an admirable objective that we should pursue. At the same time, the staff has to make sure that we aren't blowing up parking lots in these little centers. And so I think a reasonable expectation to say, okay, come up with a parking management plan that satisfies staff, and, and you can have your hours of operation for lunch seven days a week. But we still do have to solve for the cars, and that, they just can't say, well, we are not going to solve for cars anymore. That's not what they do. That's not their job. They, they remind us that we have rules, and then we sit up here and figure out ways to get around it to some extent. So, you know, the parking management plan, I think, is the best way for you to get what you need and solve the puzzle that staff has to work with. I completely agree with Commissioner Toller, you know, as, as the council gets in more and more to looking at our city, and looking at areas that need to be revitalized, and, creating places where people can walk and bike to dine, or have a personal service done, or whatever it is, our parking standards are just going to have to change. There's cities all over California, in fact, the United States, who are just dumping the parking standards, they don't have them anymore, because they recognize that in order to create vibrant new areas where homes and services and dining are close together, so people can walk and ride to get there without getting in a car. And I have a sneaky suspicion, there's a lot of businesses around Trenton where the folks just walk in to get a pizza they don't drive in. There's a whole host of businesses on, on that section of town. So I, I just think that this is, my job is to support staff in what they have to do to implement regulations and ordinances, but it's also to find creative ways to say, okay, we have to work within those rules, but, you know, let's see if you can line a, line a pitch to left field with a good parking management plan, you'll be good, you'll be on first base. So that's why I made the motion the way I did. So with that, I will ask Anna to call a roll vote, a voice vote, I'm sorry.
Chair DeArco.
Hi.
Vice Chair Zick.
No.
Commissioner Rojas.
Aye.
Commissioner Toller.
Aye.
Commissioner Russell.
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar.
Aye.
Commissioner Erath.
Yes.
That motion carries 6-1, with Commissioner Zick voting no.
Okay. That decision is final in seven days unless appealed to the city council. Mr. Palazzo, good luck. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. Thank you. Okay, call the planning commission meeting back into session, and we'll move to public hearing, item number two. Anna, could you please read the title into the record?
Planning application 21, public hearing item number two, planning application 21-23 for a retail cannabis storefront business located at 1687 Orange Avenue, King's Crew. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Thank you, Anna. Commissioner Rojas, any ex parte to report?
No, sir.
Commissioner Erath?
None, sir.
Commissioner Vivar?
Spoke with the current business owner.
Okay, Commissioner Toller?
No.
Commissioner Russell?
I had a short conversation with two of the employees from the present business.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Zick. Only had a chance to visit the site, thank you. All right, Anna had no communications to report. So Ms. Quinn, the floor is yours on the staff report.
Thank you, Chair DeArco, and good evening, commissioners. My name is Nancy Quinn, Senior Planner with the Development Services, Economic and Development Services Department. Sorry, I should actually start my presentation. Apologize about that. Planning application 21-23. Planning Application 21-23 is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a retail cannabis dispensary, which is a state license Type 10. This applicant is actually not proposing to offer retail delivery at this location, so it is strictly a request for a storefront. The proposed business name is King's Crew. Like many of the cannabis storefront CUPs that have come before the commission, this applicant has successfully completed the initial application steps, which include a pre-application and a cannabis business permit before submitting a CUP. So if the CUP is approved tonight, the applicant would continue on to the remaining steps, including issuance of a CBP. The proposed storefront is located at 1687 Orange Avenue, which is highlighted or in the dash yellow image, excuse me, highlighted in the dash yellow line on the images shown here. The subject property is zoned C1, which is the local business district commercial zone. The existing development on the property consists of an approximately 2,800 square foot commercial building. As you can see, the property is surrounded by other commercial zone properties. The proposed storefront would occupy the entire existing building. So here are some of the site photos of the existing property, which shows the current building condition. The building was constructed before 1970 and is currently occupied by a dry cleaner business, La Cresta Cleaners. The existing property contains five legal non-conforming parking spaces. However, one of the existing spaces does not meet the parking design standard and will be removed. A bicycle rack is proposed, which would be credited as one standard parking space. So after restriping and installing the bike rack, the property would still have five legal non-conforming spaces. Staff believes from a practical standpoint, that may not be sufficient for the proposed retail cannabis dispensary. As such, the applicant is proposing to provide eight off-site parking spaces located directly adjacent to the subject property. The path of travel from the off-site spaces to the proposed storefront location is actually shown on the bottom of Page Eight of the Planning Commission's staff report for this public hearing item. The applicant is also proposing to improve the driveway, which would include a public sidewalk component that would connect to the existing sidewalk network along Orange Avenue. Though that detail is not shown on the CUP's site plan here, it is noted, that improvement is noted, and it would be further reviewed by staff during the plan check process to ensure that it complies with the city's standard plans. So to ensure that all of the onsite and off-site parking spaces remain available for customers, all of the employees will be parking off-site, which has been conditioned as well, to park off-site at the company's office located on Red Hill Avenue, also in Costa Mesa. The proposed floor plan includes two major areas, the back-of-the-house area as well as the retail sales area. The retail sales area, obviously shown in green here, is the customer area. It includes a separate check-in lobby as well as an express order pickup, express order pickup area that's specifically for online and phone orders. And of course, the remainder of the facility would be back-of-the-house to support the retail sales, to support the retail sales operation. In terms of exterior improvements, the applicant is proposing to make some improvements to the existing building facade. As you can see here, it would include new windows, doors, paint, and as well as new signage. Many of the proposed improvements will actually boot to the interior of the building in order to create the backup house areas. The applicant has provided a detailed business plan that was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant, HDL. It is not attached to this report, since it does contain proprietary details. However, the business plan does describe the owner's professional experience, proof of capitalization pro forma, as well as their day-to-day operations. In addition to a business plan, the applicant also submitted a professionally-prepared security plan, which was also revealed by our cannabis consultant, HDL, who determined that the appropriate security measures were included to address the city and state requirements. Like all the other retail cannabis CUPs presented before the commission, this one also includes more than 50 standard conditions, which, for example, no onsite consumption, age restrictions, compliance with state regulations, as well as CBP renewal. And in addition to those standard conditions, staff has also proposed site-specific ones that include reconstructing the driveway per city standards, posting wayfinding signs to the off-site customer parking spaces, a parking attendant to monitor and direct customer traffic, as well as requiring employees to park off-site. Staff also wants to have the planning commission consider, as part of their motion, modifying one of the site-specific conditions, and that's specifically prior to the issuance of Building Permit Number 13. The language as currently drafted in the draft Planning Commission resolution is shown here as the first bullet point, and then on this slide on the second bullet point is the recommended modification to the condition language. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environment and Quality Act, or SEQA, per SEQA Guidelines Section 15301 for existing facilities, and approve Planning Application 21-23, subject to conditions of approval, including the one that staff recommends to be modified. So that does conclude staff's presentation. The applicant has also prepared a presentation for the commission tonight, and we're both available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions of staff?
I do. I just wanted to take a look and clarify, because I'm looking at the property line as delineated on the, on the proposed site plan, and I'm trying to find where the five are. Are the five meaning two, two to the rear, and then three in the front? Are those the parking spaces we're talking about? Or are they the ones on the bottom where it says off-site shared parking?
Yeah, Commissioner Rojas, it's two in the rear of the site, two in the front, as well as one bicycle rack located at the front. So for a total of five. The bicycle rack is credited as one standard parking space.
And our requirement, based on the square footage on that, is five? Am I understanding you correctly in saying that that's not considered sufficient?
From a practical standpoint, but the property, the properties, existing parking is considered legal non-conforming, since it does not meet the code requirements by today. But again, because the property has been existing and developed legally that way, staff does, it is considered a legal non-conforming property for parking.
Okay, well, just taking a page out of Commissioner Toller said it's always a parking issue or car issue. But okay, thank you. That's the question that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Erath, any questions of staff?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a few questions. Ms. Nguyen, thank you so much for the presentation. It's always, it's always a good one. In regards to any potential site remediation, do we have any information as to what might need to be performed, or where are we at right now?
Yeah, I can answer that. On the last slide of the presentation, we did have some modified wording for the condition. The intent there was just to essentially defer to the Orange County Healthcare Agency as to what exactly needed to be done. Staff had used some terms in the original conditions that can be interpreted in a couple different ways. So our intention there was just to defer to the Orange County Healthcare Agency as to what, if anything, needed to be done. The information that we have is that it's a dry cleaner now, and there is dry cleaning, dry cleaning processing happening at the site, and therefore, the use of chemicals, hydrocarbons and Perks specifically are used at the site. Our fire department is aware of it as well, of course. So the information that we have at this moment is that it looks like the tenant improvements, which will involve work on the interior of the building. There's no ground disturbance proposed or anything like that. So what we expect to hear from Orange County Healthcare Agency is that perhaps some, some minor cleanup related to the tenant improvements only would be required. But again, we're looking for the applicant to reach out to Orange County Healthcare Agency and confirm that information. But that's what we expect.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, Ms. Lee. We turn to Page Four of the agenda report, and you look towards the bullet points at the bottom. It says, "Other Proposed Exterior Improvements Include Constructing a New Driveway and Public Sidewalk Per the City Standards." And I'm wondering if that includes taking out the light pole, because I know from the renderings in the engineering drawings, that it doesn't appear that there's a light pole proposed on-site. But it also looks like there are no light poles all the way down Orange Avenue, all the way to 17th Street, from some of those renderings as well.
Commissioner Erath, there is no initial condition to remove the light pole at this time. So in terms of the sidewalk, it's per standards, and also that the curb and gutters also per the standards, but there's no initial condition to remove the light pole.
Okay, I know that the, the applicant proposed, you know, sidewalk improvements, and I'm, and I'm not entirely sure what the total width is, but it seems like that pole only gives maybe a foot and a half, two feet of space to the end of the curb.
Well, for, for all sidewalks, ADA requirements has to be adhered to. Minimum is three, three-foot width, but preferable is four-foot width. That's our current city standard for that. Staff can look into the situation in terms of those requirements are satisfied in this situation.
Okay, that would, yeah, that would, that would be great. It seemed really narrow right there on the corner.
Staff will investigate.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you turn to Page Three, towards the bottom, it's one of the last paragraphs. It says, "The applicant is not proposing retail delivery services should the storefront wish to offer delivery service in the future. An amendment to the CUP would be required." Would that come back to us for approval, or would that be a zoning administrator-director decision?
Any amendment to a CUP can require zoning administrator approval. It's up to the zoning administrator at that point whether he would defer that decision to the planning commission.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. If we turn to Operational Condition 20 in the conditions of approval, I can pretty much make it easy. It's, it's regarding the parking attendant. I think the language here was a little bit different than some of the other ones we've seen before, in that it seems like a parking attendant is being proposed permanently for the site, not just six months, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I assume that maybe one of the reasons for that is a similar issue that we've seen before, which is a very narrow driveway that only one car can drive through. And also, but potential blind corner through that last parking spot closest to the driveway in the front of the building.
That is one part of it. The other part, too, is that this is the first retail cannabis CUP that commission is seeing where off-site parking is proposed for customer, where previously off-site was more intended and proposed for employees.
Okay.
So there, it's just to help ensure, kind of direct the flow of traffic, and so that if, you know, a lot of, during busy rushes, for example, with customers, kind of, a lot of cars kind of queue up, I leave that there be a parking attendant that can at least point traffic into where the off-site parking is located.
Okay, great. And I think that may be it for me. I might have a question or two for the applicant when they come up. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, as well for your presentation, very thorough as always. I do have a couple questions. So my first question is about, I'm still trying to wrap my head around this parking language. So the, the staff report says that the legal non-conforming parking can remain. And then there's a note there that says that although the legal non-conforming parking can remain, staff, when observing other cannabis sites, determine that that won't be enough. And so therefore, the eight off-site parking spaces are being proposed to offset that and increase the number of vehicle parking spaces. What I'm wondering is, is the requirement, or are those eight off parking, off-site parking spaces a requirement, a requirement for staff's recommendation for approval for this project?
I can answer that. So the way that we looked at this particular case was essentially, the site does have legal non-conforming parking. We've seen cannabis uses in front of this commission before that have legal non-conforming parking. So the additional off-site parking is not necessary in order to meet a code requirement, but without it, there would be a retail cannabis store with four parking spaces and a bike rack. Staff is unsure that that would be enough in terms of parking spaces to accommodate the business's customers. What would likely happen is that the customers would end up parking in other business parking lots, using street parking, to the extent that neighborhood intrusion is a possibility. That's something that's possible as well. So in order to, for staff to really feel comfortable presenting this to the commission as we did, the applicant proposed additional off-site parking. So that's how we looked at this particular recommendation.
So staff would have not felt comfortable recommending approval were those eight off-site parking spaces not added? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, it would have certainly been more difficult. We would have presented it to the commission for direction and ultimately looked for your decision if they had not proposed off-site parking and had only proposed the four onsite spaces. But it would certainly have been more difficult for staff to recommend approval.
Okay. The staff report mentions a proposed 15-gallon tree that would be along the front edge. So I spoke to Mr. Scott Drapkin earlier today, and I'm still not able to understand where exactly on the front edge is that tree being proposed. And what I'm concerned about is, will it narrow sidewalk? And also, will maybe, maybe there be a potential of crowding between the tree, the bike rack, and the driveway, drive aisle, and the parking spaces in the front?
Yeah, Commissioner Vivar, that's a great question. And I do apologize that the staff report did erroneously described a 15-gallon tree to be proposed there. Working, in working with staff and putting the bike rack in a location that was much safer, and as well as a spot that made more sense for bicyclists, it was then put to the front of the building where the entrance is. And so a little bit of landscaping, the applicant will still be providing some landscaping, but some landscaping may be lost, if you will, in order to make the space and room for the bike rack.
So the, if I understand this correctly, the tree is no longer being provided as proposed?
Correct.
Correct, okay, thank you.
The final details landscape plan, of course, staff will review.
Of course, right. My other question that I was wondering is, I was looking over the average daily trips for the proposed site business and for the existing business. If somebody in transportation might be able to answer my question as to what ITE land use code was used to give the proposed business existing ADT credit?
Commissioner Vivar, Mr. Noel Casill will answer those questions with respect to that.
We had calculated ADT based on ITE 881, which is pharmacy drugstore, as we had used for all the cannabis retail use. And for the existing land use, it was strip retail plaza, which is a more robust trip generation, because the existing use, the laundry, dry cleaning, has very few data sets.
Is there a reason that land use 826 specialty retail wasn't used?
Yeah, this is a common substitution for the dry cleaning, because it has very few data sets. And dry cleaning usually is within a specialty retail business, like minimal. The daily trip ends for a thousand square foot of strip retail is 54.45. And taking that into account with the square footage, it equates to 159 daily trips.
And how would that compare to the proposed? And how would that compare to the proposed? Was it like much higher with the pharmacy?
Yeah. The proposed is 317 daily trips.
So an average of about 200 some, right? Average daily trips?
317 daily trips for the proposed. With credit allowed, we have 159 trip ends daily.
Okay. All right. And my last question for you as well. Thank you for that answer as well, by the way. What would be the width of the driveway, drive aisle?
I would defer to...
Like the driveway, the drive aisle for the driveway for cars wishing to access the parking spots in the back?
Yeah, Commissioner Vivar, I can help answer that one.
Sure. Thank you.
The existing driveway width is 18 feet wide. And that's, as is the, there won't be any proposed improvements to that.
I understood from the staff report that there'd be driveway modifications, so it would no longer be...
Oh, I apologize. I thought, I think I was describing the drive aisle width, but the driveway approach, the reconstructed one. Is that your question? I'll actually defer that to our city engineer.
Okay. So Commissioner Vivar, is the question the actual driveway apron or minus the wings of the driveway or is it?
Yeah. Because what I'm, when I did a site visit, yes, was it yesterday, I realized that if those two front parking spots, the ADA and the other vehicle parking spot are occupied, the, I believe that would narrow the 18-feet driveway width and then cars would have a narrower drive aisle to want to reach the, who wanted to reach the back. So I'm just curious what the drive aisle width would be.
I do want to clarify, Commissioner Vivar, that there are no parking, excuse me, no parallel parking spaces along the existing driveway. All, the existing parking that's onsite, it's two that are in the front of the building and two directly at the rear of the building. So the drive aisle is, has no parking spaces on it currently and none proposed.
So it'll still remain at 18 feet?
Correct.
So does that function then as a two-way driveway or as a one-way driveway?
It's considered legal non-conforming.
Oh, okay. Our engineer, would you, do you know if it's two-way or one-way operations?
Well, it's a two-way meaning like it operates in terms of ingress and egress.
Two cars can come in and out simultaneously?
Right. I mean, the 18-foot driveway is specially designed for, for that, for both ingress and egress.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, city engineer and...
Sir, if I can actually have you stay at the podium real quick. I'm going to hijack the questioning a little bit. So help me understand, so we know that the cannabis retail ADT was calculated under the ITE manual for pharmacies.
Yes, sir.
108 trips per thousand square feet.
Yes.
Which in this application for this structure amounts to 300 and some odd daily trips.
That's correct.
Okay. And you said that the ITE manual calculation for ADT, you did not use laundry or dry cleaning?
That's correct.
Why not?
The data set for the dry cleaning use was very small.
What's the ADT for a dry cleaning use?
I don't have that in front of me right now.
But it's, it's smaller than the 159 you cited for a specialty retail.
That we could verify and get back to you on that one.
So, okay. So when you say very small, less than 50?
I could not speculate, but we could give you the code on the actual trip rate if we have the book.
Okay. So the reason I'm asking the question is because 300 and some odd ADT for a cannabis retail use, there'll be a correlation to the amount of parking demand that those 308 ADT produce. So my concern is in the real world that if you calculate it based on the dry cleaning laundry use, that whatever small number it would be, I could see where the parking demand wouldn't require many spaces. But if you bump it up to 159 or so as a specialty retail, it just seems strange to me that while the site may have indeed with five parking spaces under the current use could easily handle that ADT from a parking perspective, I'm just, I'm a little concerned that we're trying to compare three pounds of sugar in a three-pound bag to five pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag, whatever it is, instead of a cup of sugar to a five-pound bag, if you know what I'm saying. So I, that's, that's, I'm just curious because the justification of not using the dry cleaning laundry ITE manual number seem, because it's too small, my question is so, I guess I'm a little curious why that is irrelevant and we should go with a larger number when there's, in the ITE manual, there's a, there's a, apparently a code for that exact use that's going on there right now. See what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had. Commissioner Toler, go ahead if you have questions to staff.
No questions. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Russell.
No questions at this time.
Okay, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if our transportation engineer could come back up, I'll start with the most recent line of questioning from the chairman. So I also had a question as to what the ADT was for dry cleaning use. And the reason why I was curious as to what that was is because in the staff report, it indicates that if the ADT for the cannabis establishment was at least double what the ADT for the dry cleaning use was, then there would need to be a traffic study. And the indication in the staff report is that there was no need for a traffic study. And so I am also interested in knowing what is the ADT for dry cleaning? I know you said you needed to look at that and get back. So I'm also letting you know that's a number I'm interested in. The other question I have related to this topic, and I'm not quite sure how to ask the question or how you might try to answer it, but when we look at the parking at the site, and we call it existing non-conforming, which essentially is saying that a cannabis business can move in where dry cleaners was, and the code would not require them to provide any more parking. We think it's a good idea, so we're asking for that, but the code wouldn't require that. Yet at the same time, we do a calculation on traffic impact fee and it's fairly significant. And the cost is fairly significant. And so I'm trying to square in my mind how we can say that the site is existing non-conforming, you don't really need to add any parking, yet there's a big traffic impact and there's a fee attached to that. So similar line of thinking, I think, to what the chairman had, which is, how do we know there really is enough parking based on the analysis that's going on here and the correlation between the ADT and the number of parking stalls that's provided? Because there has to be a correlation. So that's just a question I'd maybe ask you to sort of ponder and see if you can respond to that when you come back with the ADT for the dry cleaning. That's my request of you. My next question for staff, you indicate the site is legal non-conforming with regard to FAR. So can you tell me what the site's existing FAR is and what the maximum FAR under our code is?
Yeah, like a lot of the cannabis CUPs before planning commission, this one also has an allowed FAR or FAR of 0.20 and the existing FAR on this site is a 0.37.
Almost double. Okay. And you also indicate it's legal non-conforming with regard to setbacks. Could you help enlighten me on which setbacks were non-conforming?
Yes, and I'd also like to correct that. I apologize. It is actually conforming to today's standard.
For setbacks?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And then I also had a question about this sidewalk. So I visited the site. I see this indication that there's going to be some new sidewalk. I can't figure out where that is going to go. So do you have, can you put up something maybe out of your presentation that shows, and maybe you can kind of point with the mouse as to where this sidewalk is going to go?
I do want to point out that the CUP plan, site plans, doesn't necessarily show this detail, but the, the CUP plans do have a notes that indicate that the applicant will be improving the sidewalk and driveway according to city standards. So the kind of the general area here is the, I guess where you can see the two egress/ingress arrows?
Yes.
And kind of the dash line there. Sorry, that wasn't very descriptive. The yellow dash line that's right in front of the arrows, that's kind of the general area of the improved driveway as well as public sidewalk.
So I'm still not grasping where the sidewalk, I'm assuming the sidewalk on this...
So it'll be really similar. So, Vice Chair, excuse me, if you take a look at the adjacent property?
Yeah.
You see how that driveway incorporates the sidewalk? It will be very similar to that.
Okay. I think I understand what you're saying. And with the same diagram, I see that the clear width is 18 feet. Are they removing the bollards as part of their improvements? Because if they're not, then the clear span really isn't 18 feet in terms of vehicle access.
Staff would review that detailed at plan check and it would be, need to be removed in order to keep a clear 18-foot wide drive aisle.
So we would require those bollards to be removed?
Yes, since it is impeding into the already legal non-conforming driveway width. If, so, sorry.
And the only reason that we wouldn't require the bollards to be removed is if they were acquired by another code, say Southern California Edison's Code, Building Code or Fire Code. Those would be the reasons we would not ask for them to be removed at plan check.
Okay. They're, they're there to protect some of the utilities that are there on the wall. So I was curious. On staff report page eight, where you're talking about the fact that these eight parking stalls are surplus to that adjacent development, you indicate that the development requires 320 spaces, there's 328, therefore eight surplus. My first question is, do you know if Baja Fish Tacos has an outdoor patio under a temporary use permit?
Staff is unaware if Baja Fish Tacos has a, an approved temporary use permit at this location.
Okay. And then I was kind of curious about this requirement, the last sentence of that middle paragraph that says, "Should the off-site parking be terminated, the applicant must notify the city in writing 30 days prior to termination and may be required to secure other off-site parking." If we call the site existing non-conforming, I was just curious about, about that. I'm sure it's a condition the applicant would agree to. But to me, that indicates that you're really concerned that there's not enough parking for this business. Am I, am I reading that correct? That you're that concerned that if these eight went away, you'd want to make sure that they made some arrangements for, what if they said, well, we can't find any other parking?
Yeah, so I can respond to that. What it was meant to indicate was only that if the planning commission felt that the off-site parking was important to the operation of the business at this location, then our intent would be if that agreement ever went away, to require the applicant to follow up with some replacement parking. If though the commission decides it's not an important feature to the approval tonight, or if from a practical perspective, staff counts the spaces at some point when the business is operational and determines that the five spaces onsite are perfectly adequate, then it gave us the flexibility to make those decisions in the field after we had more information about actual operations.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Win, if you could go back to the slide regarding the required, condition of approval 13, the required engagement with Orange County Health. Thank you. So the original condition required submittal of an ESA to the planning division and any recommended actions from that ESA into the construction plans. And we've changed it to just, go ahead and just reach out to Orange County Healthcare Agency and find out if they, I'm assuming, need to remediate any conditions on the site and our proof of, to get to satisfy this condition is just a confirming communications that, that we've actually communicated with Orange County Health and if there's any proposed action. Here's where, and this may be my novate or my ignorance about what Orange County Healthcare Agency is going to require them to do to do an environmental assessment, but as I read it now, the ESA process magically disappears. So is Orange County Healthcare Agency going to require they do an ESA?
The intention of the change is to give the applicant and the city the opportunity to have that conversation as to whether an environmental site assessment is required. Sometimes an environmental site assessment can mean a record search. Other times it means a little bit something more than that. So with the ambiguity in that term, the applicant and staff discussed that it would be more appropriate to allow Orange County Healthcare Agency to tell the city what is required and then for the city to ensure that those actions, whatever they may be, are incorporated into the building plans prior to issuance of building permit. That's the intent.
Okay. What might some of those actions be? Can you just give me a...
What I would anticipate is if there's any modifications, for example, to the concrete floor that's in the tenant space now, that there may be some special treatment or monitoring of the concrete slab in that area when it's treated. I could expect something like that because there are dry cleaning machinery and chemicals that are used in the tenant space now. It would be that order of magnitude that I would expect.
So you wouldn't anticipate any soil inspection?
I wouldn't because there's no proposal of ground disturbance. So our question for issuance of a building permit, what we are looking at is just the tenant improvements that are proposed. If there are other laws outside of what we would be reviewing as part of a set of tenant plans, then we would expect the applicant would need to comply with whatever those laws are outside of the city's process. But at the end of the day, what the city is looking for is compliance with any laws or regulations pertaining to the tenant improvement that we are reviewing as part of our building permit issuance.
Okay. So essentially, we're deferring to the expertise of the Orange County Healthcare Agency in terms of dealing with any chemicals or any substance that would need to be remediated before they could go ahead and get building permits?
Correct.
Okay. And that could include asbestos?
It could. I don't anticipate it would, but it could.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you for that. You can take that slide down. So I want to deal with condition as it's written in the staff report on, if you don't have it numbered, condition of approval number 21. Should the off-site parking provided at 171 through 187 East Seventeenth Street be terminated, the applicant must notify the Director of Economic Development, Development, Director of Economic and Development Services in writing 30 days prior to termination and secure other equivalent off-site parking to address parking shortages, subject to review and approval. Now, staff report on page eight qualifies that a bit, and I'm assuming the conditions of approval control. The applicant must notify the city in writing in 30 days prior to determination and may be required to secure other off-site parking. My, my interest is in, not a may, but it shall. My interest is in, not a "may," but it shall, shall be a condition that that off-site parking would be required. And I want to get back to that question about the delta between specialty retail and dry cleaning laundry and... Well, actually, we got to get to the public hearing, and I don't want to opine, but I do have ongoing questions about that. So I think with that, we'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward, please. State your name and address for the record, and I will ask you if you have read the Staff Report and the Conditions of Approval, and if you agree with the Conditions of Approval.
We agree as amended.
Okay, thank you very much. The Forceurs.
My name is Lori Holcomb. And I am the founder/CEO of Goldflora. Address is 3165 Red Hill Avenue, Costa Mesa. That's where our corporate headquarters are. And I have with me today Greg Gammet, who's my Chief Operating Officer, and we have Dan Thompson and Ray Dormay from Mastercraft Homes and Black Star Contractors, who helped us put our submittal together. So first, want to thank you guys for your time, and also thank Nancy for helping us get to this point, to put this presentation together. A little bit about Goldflora, if you don't mind. I started the company in 2016 by myself, one person. And I think we started with eight employees. Today, we're up over 350. We are a vertically integrated cannabis company, which means we cultivate, manufacture, distribute, and we have retail locations. As of today, we have four retail locations, which Greg will probably go over in the presentation. And we also have branded product. So the branded products range in variance of what we distribute, but in California, we would place in the top 20 brands for distribution. So we have grown since 2016 and look forward to operating a retail cannabis storefront in Costa Mesa.
I think I accidentally pushed a button. How you guys doing tonight? Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight. And just another shout out to Nancy for helping us out so much through this process. You know, it's new to the city and new to a lot of people. It's not new to us. I've been operating cannabis since 2009, back in Colorado, when it first became legal. Like she said, my name's Greg Gammet. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Goldflora. So what that means is I make sure we're compliant. We operate within the rules and regulations, and we don't take that lightly. Every other location that we have operated in, part of our application process, we get letters of recommendation from the cities that we operate in, from city council members like Susie Price. Desert Hot Springs, where our big facility is located, the director of the cannabis program there wrote a letter of recommendation for us. And hopefully someday, we earn that trust from you. Goldflora Kingscrew is a woman-owned company, as you saw from before, fully integrated, which means we kind of control our destiny. We're not going to be a, you know, shot-in-the-dark kind of company. We're always going to be to kind of control our own destiny by supplying our own products into our own stores. I'm going to change the slide. We also fully own and operate four other dispensaries, as Lori suggested earlier. Kingscrew in Long Beach, Airfield Supply in San Jose, Higher Level in Seaside, and another Higher Level in Hollister. We also have distribution hubs in Desert Hot Springs, where our main hub is, here in Costa Mesa as part of our Measure X business, Seaside in San Jose. We also will be operating Kingscrew Dispensary in Corona soon. We've already been approved, and hopefully here, and a second location for Redwood City in the coming year. We have a team of amazing executives and managers that have been in the industry for over a decade, and always running a successful compliant business. When Measure Q was first passed, we were so excited, because many of our founders and owners and investors live right here in the neighborhood. Soon as that was passed, we looked long and hard for a property that would not only back up, we don't want to back up to residential. We want to be in a commercial zone where commercial, other businesses are doing retail, so we're not being disruptive. Our team is also very familiar with site planning and construction with the city of Costa Mesa. Dan Thompson and Ray Dormay, who is also here tonight, have completed several construction projects within the city limits. We want a location that we're not going to be significantly changing the area, so that's why we chose this location here. You can see the existing building here on this slide, what it looks like now, what we propose it to look like when we get finished. We're doing a complete remodel of the building inside and out, and bringing the building up to current city codes and standards with no increase in height or square footage. This will help with revitalization of the commercial center to help keep customers in Costa Mesa. This work will include new interior floor, in ceiling, top to bottom, updated exterior, new landscape using, excuse me, drought-resistant plants, resurface the parking lot, new upgraded doors and windows, lighting and security upgrades. As you can see from the renderings, we'll be changing the look of the building tastefully, and the completed design has a bench, a beach bungalow fill, and will fit in the surrounding community and businesses. The property is located at 1687 Orange Avenue. It's a standalone building. It is 2,778 square feet and 13 parking stalls crowded, including the biking rack. We will have a 24-hour presence of third-party state licensed security company onsite at all times. Customer access point will be located at the east side of the building. You'll see the two arrows on the right-hand side of the screen. Delivery and employee entrance will be located on the south and west side of the building. We will have eight POS stations, point-of-sale stations, with one station dedicated to online order and call-ahead customer pickup. The sales floor will be 660 square feet. What we try to do is we try to get people in and out. There's no hanging out. There's no shopping. We really want to get that customer to turn over, A, for parking and travel, and not having too many people in the store at once. It's safer. And B, just to make sure we're not a nuisance to our neighbors. The limited access area consists of office space for managers. They'll have a DVR that records up to 180 days, and office space for managers, storage room, secured storage room, containing for the THC products. They'll be under lock and key, and regular storage, an employee restroom, product intake and acceptance room, and employee break room. As I mentioned before, we have 24-hour security guards. They'll be securing the premise, safety personnel controls, protecting the assets, and responding to any incidences. This is 24 hours. They're going to be on camera. We're going to make the neighborhood safer, just like in Long Beach when we first moved in, 7th and PCH, very busy intersection right there. There was a lot of homeless, a lot of vagrants, a lot of harassing of employees across the street at Target. We kind of teamed up with all the businesses in that area. We're providing security, not only for us, but we also worked with the police department. Chief Herzog said I was the first businessperson to contact him before we opened up out of any type of business. We try to work with the local police, fire, and help them train and know what to expect, because it's all new for them, too. We'll also have a parking lot attendant on. We'll be using a qualified person. Sole purpose of this person is to be monitor the parking and assist in a cohesive traffic flow. Product deliveries will be delivered through the dedicated employee delivery entrance on the south side near the west end of the building. All deliveries will be scheduled, only allowed, and only allowed during certain times so we don't interrupt traffic flow. The entrance will be well-lit, monitored with high-resolution camp parking. We get 15 more parking spots located at our corporate headquarters on Red Hill. And odor control, charcoal filters. We designed the HVAC system to mitigate any kind of odors. Plus, all products that come to a dispensary are sealed in child-resistant containers and tamper-proof. Product and store access protocols. We check IDs twice. We check them at the door. We check them at the register. All doors are equipped with ID scan for employees. So if you're going to go in the back entrance, you got to have either a code, a bioscan, or an employee badge that you scan to get in. Video and surveillance cameras is by Intex Solutions. They're located locally here. Live 24-hour monitor, 100% coverage, facial recognition, and 180 minimum-day backup. Community outreach. We're going to add 20 jobs. We hire locally. We're going to host job fairs. We're going to work with the city to hire residents from underserved communities. Community benefits, we call it Kingscrew Cares. We do beach cleanups. I heard you guys talking about the Back Bay cleanup. I love the Back Bay. We'd love to chip in on that. If it's this Saturday, I'll make sure we get some people there. The number-one thing we do is beach cleanups in Long Beach. And we also help elderly folks clean up their yards, maybe paint a fence, paint a wall. Employee customer volunteer cleanup, expungement clinic. So if someone's been in jail for, you know, a minor cannabis offense, we're part of the Last Prisoner Project to try to help them, you know, gain freedom. And we're a member of the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce. Like I mentioned before, we got the odor control, traffic control with a parking monitor, no loitering or consumption onsite. We move them in, move them out, work with local government, police and fire, and 24-hour community liaison. That's myself. I don't put that on anybody. You can call me, anybody here can attest to it. You can call me anytime, day or night. I'm going to answer the phone. So part of this project, we canvassed the local area, 500-foot radius. Myself and two of our other employees delivered over 220 flyers to every single address on the list. We held an open house, and we didn't get any opposition at the local house. At the open house, we had a few people come and support. And we held that on August 6th at our corporate office on Red Hill. I would like to thank you for your time. We respectfully request your approval for Planning Application 21-23.
Okay, thank you, sir, very much. Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions to the applicant?
No, sir, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Erath?
Thank you, Chair. If you can keep it on that slide, please.
The community?
Yes, please. So Mr. Gammet, thank you so much for your presentation. I do want to ask you a quick question. I assume that the picture of you, or I'm not sure it's you, but the folks that are standing there at Someone Carries Soup Kitchen, that was taken before the pandemic. Is that correct?
That was. Yeah, that's several employees there. I could name most. Most of them are still working for us. There's a few new faces.
Okay.
I think Perry's here, but yeah, that was before the pandemic.
Okay, I just want to make it known for public record that I became the director of that nonprofit after the pandemic started.
Oh, awesome.
So this picture took place before I was hired. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I do have a quick question. Who are you, if you don't mind sharing this information, who are you contracting with for the additional parking?
I might have to let Dan Thompson answer that question. He's one of our founders and owners.
Okay.
I'm more on the operations side. He gives me something to operate, and I operate it.
Great, thanks. I'm just, I mean, I guess I could enrich that point a little bit more. And curious to know what the duration of the current contract is.
Yeah, hi, Dan Thompson, Goldflora. So it is part of our lease agreement. It's embedded in our lease, the additional parking off-site with DMP properties that manage the entire site, not just that site, but also other commercial properties across the street.
Okay.
But it is part of our lease agreement.
Okay, perfect. I think I could ask maybe a different question here. As far as the permanent parking attendant, is there any, are you putting them through any kind of certification process? And I think one of the reasons why I'm asking this is that the two spots that are in the front require the cars to pull right back out into traffic on Orange Avenue, and they can only go one way, right?
Yeah, we have looked into various certifications. As you know, there are not many. I mean, Caltrans offers some. I don't think they'd be relevant to this. But we have found a couple services that give really valet-type parking certifications, and we'll be sure that that person has that certification.
Okay, perfect. I think that's my questions for now. Yeah, that'll be it. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Vivar, questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation very much. Very informative. Two quick questions. So in your outreach efforts, you mentioned the 500-foot radius, sending out flyers. Did you deliver a flyer to the midpoint of that radius of existing business owners?
Yes, I spoke with most of them. That was the route I took mostly that day. So if I couldn't get a business owner, I talked to a manager or somebody who was, you know, an assistant manager there, left a flyer, a leave behind, that said, "Hey, my contact information on it, and any questions, any problems, please give me a call." The other thing we do, we know everybody in the community is not going to love us. I got, when I deliver those, I got zero resistance from the businesses. The one thing I really, there's a lot of people in Long Beach that didn't like us when we first moved in, and now they've changed their tune. And I'd be happy to hold open houses and tour any of the local neighborhood residents through there. But like I said, we don't really back up to residential, but there is a small sliver that does hit some residential, so we're conscious of that.
So, sir, you're telling me that you spoke to the employees or owners of the dry cleaners?
No, that public notice was put up by the city at that location.
But you didn't go in and speak to them beforehand?
No.
Okay. I do have another question, a two-part question. So what was the, I guess, business reasoning behind choosing this site, although A, it is pretty severely underparked, and B, has an existing business on site?
Well, it was available, for one. Number two, like I said, it doesn't back up to residential, and it conforms to the area. It's all retail, commercial type of businesses. So we're not trying to shove this in an old office building. We're not trying to put this, you know, 1,001 feet away from a school. You know, we tried to steer clear of all that. If you start drawing circles on a map in Costa Mesa, it starts to narrow it down a little bit. Then you call property owners to see what's available, and this spot was available.
What do you mean available, since there's an onsite existing dry cleaners business?
Yeah, I didn't personally negotiate that, but I can, I can...
So I negotiated the lease with the property owner, and we used a broker. And the broker called and said that we were available to negotiate a lease, so we did.
So you chose the site because of his location, even though it was occupied?
Yes.
Do you know if any help will be provided for the relocation of the current business owner?
We don't have any knowledge of the current business owner's lease or when that expires.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I defer my time to you.
Okay. Commissioner Toll, any questions to the applicant?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Russell?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, I think it's the south side of the building. Right now, there's, it looks like some maybe water pipes that intrude out into the driveway. And on your rendering of what you're going to do, those are gone now. Are you going to remove those? What's going to happen to those?
Are you talking about the ones here in the front corner?
There's a window there now.
Yeah. I believe that's gas service right there. And once we put the final plans in with the city that might need to get relocated, I'm not sure on that.
Yeah, because I noticed that it goes out into the driveway about three feet, and that would cut down on how much space that cars have to go back and forth. So you don't know what the plan for that is at this point?
Well, it looks to me like it's going to be removed. I'd have to look at the construction plans. But let's just say it stays there. That parking lot attendant should easily be able to direct one-way traffic into the back.
And then my, I think my last question is, you're going to have a guard 24 hours a day. How much of the parking lot that you're leasing are they going to be responsible for? Is it just that one little section, or are they going to be...
Well, if they see something going down, of course, we're going to be good neighbors and try to stop something that's not going on. But their primary responsibility is our property, our customers, our employees, and our assets.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I think those are all my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Vice Chair, questions of applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm also interested in this particular picture for the couple of questions I've got. So... the couple of questions I've got. So assuming that the gas meters get relocated and the bollards protect them, it still shows what appears to be a protrusion there with that window coming out. So the clear span to the wall of 18 feet would be somewhat narrowed at that point. Am I looking at that correct? I'm also referring to your drawing, A 2.1.
Let's keep in mind these are rendered drawings, so, you know...
How about this drawing that's in our package, A 2.1?
Let me pull that up. I could have Dan answer this. I think if that's a concern, we could do a recessed window. But let me see if Ray, this is Ray Dormay, by the way.
Hello, Ray Dormay. How you doing? Yeah, that window can be recessed in if need be, and that protrusion can be minimized as much as possible. As for the gas, we'll have to get together with the gas company. Those are bollards protecting that gas line. We'll get together with them. We'll have to relocate also the SCE meter, which is inside the building. So we know there's a few improvements that'll have to be thought through as we go through it, obviously. But I'll be working with planning and building and safety to make sure everything conforms as best as possible, including the driveway approach.
And so it is your intention to provide a clear 18-foot distance all the way down the length of the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then if we could go back to that rendering for my next question. Yeah, that one. So the sidewalk that I was asking about earlier, is that depicted in this drawing?
It is not. That was a last-minute request by the Planning Commission, or by Nancy. We looked at it. I actually walked the site and felt that I could duplicate what's on the left of the property and said, you know, the best for our ability.
Peace. Okay. And then I think I have a question, either for Laurie or possibly Dan. So when you indicated that that surplus, not surplus, the extra parking was part of the lease, am I to interpret that as the building is being leased by you as opposed to owned by you?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And the landlord, the owner of that building that you're leasing, is the same owner of the parking across the shrubs that you will be leasing?
Yes.
Same owner?
Yes.
And part of the same lease?
Or lease, yes.
And the term of that lease and any options you might have are inclusive of that parking?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I have no questions for the applicant. Thank you for your presentation. I will open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Any member of the public in chambers wishes to speak to this item, please come forward now. You can choose either podium. State your name and address for the record, please. You don't have to, but it helps with our minutes.
Certainly. My name is Vicki Lund. I live on Ogles Street, which is, I can actually see the property, the face of the property from the alleyway where I live, just right across the street. So I do understand, you know, the idea is it's a commercial area, but it's truly not. There's tons of houses right there. It's a family area. So I'm just hoping for the next couple of minutes, you could just empathize with me for just a moment. I would so appreciate it. Thank you. But the homeless issue, this isn't new to any of us in Costa Mesa. It's unbelievable what we're facing right now. And they are tons of homeless people. I have them in my alleyway, had one in my backyard. At 10 o'clock in the morning, this guy just come and sit down in the backyard. My husband had to go out there. I'm concerned for my husband. He has to go out there and tell them, what are you doing here? You need to leave. I had an adult male on the roof of the house next door to me in the middle of the night screaming, the top of his lungs that he was in trouble. I forgot the exact words other than screaming. I mean, in the middle of the night, getting woken up by the homeless. I'm very concerned about this location. You know, I understand, you know, a woman getting into her own business. I'm like, that's fantastic. I mean, way to go. I just think that a delivery would be a better thing than having a storefront, retail, you know, cannabis store open right now in this area. Right now, so many families are dealing with so many issues with their children. I don't have young children. I have grandchildren that come and visit my house, and I would have to have them actually cross the street right where, in front of the store, where they're proposing to go to Von's to pick up some ice cream. I would rather, you know, crumble doughnuts or cookies, or a little restaurant where it's open for everyone to go. I just think this is going to make it difficult for families. There's a lot of people that would be here tonight if they didn't have their kids in school and soccer and softball practice and homework. The dynamics are just really difficult that people are dealing with right now. And I really think it's going to be a very big strain on the police department at this point. I've had many conversations of all the problems that we've had. The security guard that's behind our track, that works at Sprouts and that area where Staples is, their hands are completely tied. And we've had people just shooting up needles. In my alley, a man urinating where my tenant and I saw. I mean, it's really bad. So I don't think this is going to add to what we're trying to do in Costa Mesa. And as a young teenage kid, I was using drugs myself. I started with marijuana, thought it would be okay. Within a very short time, I was using different drugs. And by the end of high school, I was suicidal. So it's the gateway drug. I think it's safe to say it's still the gateway drug. Whether it's legal or not, doesn't matter at this point. But to have it so accessible for kids, you know, for people to get at and...
Okay. My name is Earl Lund Jr. That's my wife. But I wanted to actually explain something differently. I've been involved with commercial construction for almost 40 years, so I've dealt with all kinds of construction. But, you know, looking at the rendering, I actually was rear-ended right in front of the dry cleaner. You know, the picture here shows like there's hardly any traffic on the street. I know the traffic surveys would show that 17th and Orange is an extremely busy intersection. They've actually done traffic modifications there because of all the traffic. And if you look with what's going on here in front, you've got one handicap space, one regular space. The handicap space probably isn't going to be used that much, according to most commercial construction, but you have to have it per code. You have another space there that's in front. But one of the real problems, because I actually go to the dry cleaner, is it's so dangerous coming out as you back out of there with all the traffic coming from off of 17th Street. You've got the Sprouts Shopping Center right across the street with Rite Aid. You've obviously got Von's over here, which is, you know, that's where the spots are coming from, that they're taking. So that actually area isn't too bad. You've just got so much traffic in this area, and you'll see constantly, you know, Orange backing up as you're turning left onto 17th Street. People are coming off 17th Street onto Orange, and that spot right there is extremely dangerous when you have to back out and then come out, even if you have an attendant there. I mean, it's an extremely awkward location, and the parking is horrible, and it's, there's accidents that happen there almost all the time. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Evening. Hi, my name is Brian Kolski. I'm a local, I'm a physician in Costa Mesa. I have two kids that go to elementary school in Costa Mesa. And from the standpoint of, I think I have sort of two vested interests. One is, as somebody who takes care of patients, right now, we currently have no really accessible, and someone who believes in cannabis as medicine, especially for our older folks, having a reputable, safe place to acquire cannabis for their medical conditions is extremely important. And with the current state of affairs, it's, you know, with, you know, just the unregulation of these unregulated cannabis dispensaries, it's a really bad thing, and it's quite frankly dangerous. And as a business owner and a father and parent, the cannabis ship sailed, and we have to basically now, we have the luxury as Costa Masons to pick our partners for this extremely important decision. And knowing personally the leadership of King's Crew, I trust them to be compliant, to not, I'm not worried about underage kids getting marijuana or being exposed to unsavory elements, because I know how they run their business. I know Greg and I were neighbors. Our kids went to Newport Heights Elementary School together, so we're, these are people that have a vested interest in our community. And I feel strongly that they should, we should approve their conditional permit and cannabis use space. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Perry. Chairman, thank you. Commissioner, thank you for having me today. I just want to speak on behalf of King's Crew, and just the fact that Costa Mesa is allowing the legal dispensaries, I think it really helps with pertaining to the illegal dispensaries, especially around my neighborhood in Costa Mesa. If one pops up and gets closed, another one just pops open. I feel opening a King's Crew, especially at this location, will definitely help stir people in to know what's legal and what's not legal. I feel there's a problem right now with delivery service, illegal delivery services, where people are thinking that they're getting legitimate legal cannabis, and they're actually not. So I'm glad that Costa Mesa is opening that up and having legitimate dispensaries sell legal product that is tested and regulated. I feel that this is a great location, and I feel, you know, this will now stop me from having to travel all the way to Long Beach or to Santa Ana to get legal cannabis. So thank you, guys, for that. And I'm definitely in favor of having King's Crew in Costa Mesa.
Thank you, sir, very much. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
A little short. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for your time. My name is Rhonda Delgado. I'm a Costa Mesa resident that's in favor of the retail cannabis storefront business located at 1687 Orange Avenue. I first moved to Costa Mesa 10 years ago, back in 2012, on 17th Street. That's within walking distance of this proposed establishment. I'm very familiar with the area and have loved seeing all of the new retail shops, restaurants, bars, and other businesses in the area pop up over the years. But I am especially excited about this proposed licensed dispensary, King's Crew in Costa Mesa, as I'm a medicinal cannabis patient with doctor recommendation that has had to travel to Santa Ana in the past. I'm also very familiar with King's Crew in Long Beach. It's a very contemporary and modern establishment that focuses on holistic medicine and wellness. And I would be very thankful to have such a beautiful and welcoming dispensary in my community. So I just wanted to share my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak to this item? Okay. Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom or telephone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
We'll close public comment. I want to come back to staff. I'm going to take up again my questions about ADT relative to the use of the site. So first of all, I guess the first question is, were you able to find out what the ADT is for laundry, dry cleaning in the manual?
So I have the source right now. It's the latest ITE Trip Generation Manual, 11th Edition. Due to small data set, the dry cleaning did not make it to the, that's why we use the specialty retail.
So dry cleaning laundry has no...
No data set.
Noted data set.
So what happens is when there are traffic studies, like I have a similar traffic study like this. They put a disclaimer that says, this is a trip generation study for a dry cleaner. The project site trip generation is based on ITE, whatever edition it was used for. The ITE does not have a land use code for dry cleaner use. But consistent with the ITE manual descriptions, traffic analysis assumes a similar land use. That's why in the book, ITE Land Use 822 is strip retail plaza is the most appropriate use to get an estimation of a dry cleaning business.
Okay. And you said that that specialty retail number in the ITE manual is 159 ADT per thousand square feet?
It's, the average weekday rate is 54.45. And in our calculation...
Okay.
Multiplied that by the square footage, it equates to 159 trips daily.
Okay, so 159 trips daily.
Yes.
Versus the 300 or so with the retail cannabis, using the ITE manual for pharmacy?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so you figured then the traffic impact fees based on the delta between the 300 and the 159?
Yes, 300 and 159, and there's a discount of 5%.
What's the discount for, like pass-by trips or something like that?
It's an existing traffic impact fee credit.
Okay. All right. So, all right. So you've helped me out a lot. I mean, okay, you've helped me out. I appreciate it. You can have a seat from my perspective. On follow-up staff questions, I... Okay, and so Vice Chair Zick asked, the property that the dry cleaning structure's on is owned by the same company that owns the shopping center, correct? Is that, okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions of staff to wrap up?
None, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Erath?
No questions, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir. I do have one question for transportation engineer, city engineer, if you'd like to come up again.
Sir, could you come forward again, please? Thank you.
I was looking at the land use codes yesterday and trying to calculate the difference myself between the current proposed, or the proposed site, which would use, I think, land use code 882 or 881 for pharmacy with drive-through. Am I mistaken, but is land use 822 strip retail, but for a strip retail, that is 40K or bigger square footage? Because I saw that in the description of this land use code. Strip retail 40K plus. Is that correct?
Commissioner Vivar, strip retail plaza is less than 40,000K.
Less than 40,000K?
Yes.
Oh, so not larger than 40,000K?
Yes. Anything below 40,000K.
Is there a reason that we're still going with this? And, I mean, I, sort of with my engineering background, and I, you know, you have one as well, of course. I don't know if it would be appropriate to equate a 2,300, whatever square foot building this is with a strip retail plaza data set. Is there not something for, I believe specialty retail is actually land use code 826, is that not in the ITE? that not in the ITE manual that you're holding?
Let me go to the table of contents. Actually, the specialty retail 826 is no longer presented in the 11th Edition.
Okay. Okay, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Toler, any questions, staff? Commissioner Russell, Vice Chair, you're all done? Okay. All right, I'll ask the applicant to come back up if they want to make any final comments. We'll close public comment. Wait, Anna, do we have anybody? I think I asked that on Zoom or, okay, yeah, we'll close public comment. Go ahead, ma'am, sorry.
First, just want to thank everybody for your time tonight, and again, for putting the time and effort to put this package together, Nancy. And then for the lady in the room, hopefully, if we get this approved, I can tell you, in Long Beach, where we have a dispensary, we back up on two corners to houses, and we had a very severe homeless problem, and city was not able to solve that. And with the 24-hour guards that we had, and the light that we had during the day and the nighttime, they actually just went away. And I'd say that they went somewhere else, I don't know where else they went. You know, they didn't probably go where they should have, and we do work well with the police. So, we can't solve all the problems, but we will try to be good neighbors if we get this approved. I'll give you my business card if you have any questions, and sorry for your struggles. But anyway, I just wanted to address the lady in the room and the traffic. I don't know what to do about the traffic part, but, and then Mr. Toler, when we started this, you gave a presentation today, and all roads literally lead back to parking. So, I just feel like these planning commission meetings are parking, parking, parking. So, anyway, thank you guys again for your time, and hopefully, we get a success tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask if there's any motion.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Vivar?
I'd like to move that we deny application PA 21-23 on the grounds that there is insufficient evidence to show that site intensity related to ADT would not be an actual problem.
Is there a second?
With the lack of a traffic study.
Is there a second on the motion? Motion dies for a lack of a second? Okay, so, I'll make a motion. I'm going to modify some of the, I'm going to add a condition, though. So, I'll find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA/PERCEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, Class 1, Existing Facilities, Approved Planning Application 21-3, Subject to the Conditions of Approval and the Findings. And I want to add one condition, and that would be that if, I'm assuming the property owner wants this tenant pretty badly. So, if we could go to, in fact, I'll look at a site aerial here. If we go to the, let me see here, diagram, erg. So, we go to page L01, which shows the parking overhead. It shows, it's the numbered parking spaces that are being secured for parking agreement, per the parking agreement between the tenant, applicant, and the property owner. I'm assuming, one, that those parking spaces are going to be marked as reserved for King's Crew only? Okay, and I didn't see that that was conditioned in the conditions, Ms. Leah, is it? I may have missed it, it's quite possible.
Yes, Chair, there is a wayfinding condition. Give me a second if I can find it. I believe it's the prior to the issuance of building permit, and, sorry about that. I'm sorry, it's actually prior to the issuance of the cannabis business permit, and it's the last one of that series. So, prior to the issuance of cannabis business permit, condition of approval number seven.
Okay.
I know there's no handwritten page numbers, otherwise I would direct you to that.
I'm going to take your word for it, okay. So, the other condition I would like to add, and this will modify the site plan a little So, I would like to condition the approval that the property owner and/or the tenant provide a, create a walkway from between parking space number five and the drive into King's Crew, so directly from south to north, that that drive, that that walkway, and I'll tell you why in a minute, that walkway obviously be ADA compliant. And then that would move, that would be a loss of one space, and I think from, I think from the parking count, we were, I think we were like, we were going to eliminate, we were going to take these seven spaces, and that was going to push this overall center right down to the minimum on their required parking. So, my concern is, I don't want folks walking out here, walking out where cars are coming into the main center, walking on the sidewalk. I would like to see, and there may be some other place to do it, but I want to condition that there needs to be some pedestrian path of travel from the parking spaces in the shopping center directly to, without having to go out on the sidewalk. The other condition I would like to add is that this be, this CUP, if approved by the Commission, comes back to the Commission for review in six months. That's the motion. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Commissioner Toler, I see. Okay, so we'll have a discussion. So, just on the motion, I'm not at all convinced that there's going to be enough parking here, but, and I, but I can't sit here and go, okay, I think this is going to be, from a traffic standpoint, a significant intensification of use between dry cleaners laundry, which is so small, it doesn't even have its own dataset in the ITE manual, to this. And so, I think, in some respects, what we're doing is we're taking kind of a flyer here that somehow that this little dry cleaner is actually producing only about, I don't know what the number was, about 150 trips a day. I'd be shocked if that was the number. But at any rate, this is why I want to come back in six months to make sure parking is adequate and there's no issues. I feel much more at ease, I didn't know this, that the property owner is the same. So, if there is a problem, it's going to be between the tenant and the property owner, because I don't know that, I don't know the lease restrictions on the other tenants in the, in the shopping center. They may not like having their parking spaces taken away from them, but I don't know that, and it's not my business. This is a tenant-property-owner issue, and so I'm not going to concern myself with it. But I do want to see it in six months. Of course, I won't be here, but have the Commission see it in six months, and we'll see. What, what I don't like, the fact, and I think where the city loses, is we're receiving significantly less traffic impact fees because we're using the 54.5 number versus whatever little miniscule number the dry cleaner was. And I think, so, we don't get the fees that we would normally get, and I don't, I don't want to penalize them, because we have to use some dataset, and I think we probably use one, but I, seems to me that we're leaving a lot of loot on the table that we probably shouldn't be leaving, or leaving there, particularly since, you know, one of the things we constantly hear about is improvement of our roadways, and that costs a lot of money. And this company and this business is going to benefit from our infrastructure by having customers drive to it or walk to it, and I know they're going to put in a new sidewalk, appreciate that. So, you know, beyond that, you know, it's an allowed use under the code, I really don't have any reason to object to it, other than I just think we're vastly underestimating the average daily trips that are going to come into the place and the parking, but that's a problem six months from now. If it is a problem, that the future Commission can look at and decide if there needs to be modifications. So, Commissioner Toler, do you have any comments on the motion for your second?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, obviously, I'm in support of the motion. I think it's a facelift. I think it's a retail business moving into a retail spot where there used to be retail business. I'm going to repeat some of the comments I've said, because it's a new crew, right? The state approved this, the city approved this, we're just deciding on a case-by-case basis where they're appropriate, where they're not. I would never approve this if I believed that there would be an increase in delinquent activity or an intensification of that activity. In fact, we've seen, we've heard from our security teams and from our police department that the opposite occurs. I have little kids, too, I would never vote in favor of this if I thought that this would make the environment unsafe in any way for kids. Regarding the traffic being sketchy there, yes. Cars are getting bigger, windows are getting tinted, the screens are getting bigger, most drivers are on their phones, they're accelerating faster. It's very sketchy. Should the government's response to that be, therefore, you can't have a successful business in this retail spot? No, I don't think so. I think that that's a problem that the city definitely needs to deal with, but the burden is not on businesses. And the response of the government is not to throw a blanket on popularity of businesses and say, no, you can only have an unpopular business here in a retail environment. This is 17th Street. I really appreciate the sidewalk going in, I appreciate that the front door is facing the street, it looks like a house. I appreciate staff defaulting to taking a conservative stance and covering all the bases on all these projects, despite how excruciating it might be from the perspective of some of us. I also appreciate the rest of the Commission that's nitpicking everything I can imagine or ever think of. But I think this is a good project, and I don't think it's going to be a problem. I think if you, if you pulled up that aerial again, Ms. Nguyen, if you wanted to, and we could just take a look at, no pressure, but on the slideshow, you could see all the gray that is allocated for the movement and storage of private vehicles in that area. And with that in mind, no, the aerial, where the, it has, there's a zoning map next to an aerial. I think it's in our presentation, but I think it's worth pulling up real quick. It's already 9:46, I may as well stand another minute, make up my point. Okay, look at all the gray, ooh, you had it. There it is, on the left-hand side, all that gray is space, no, the other one, the aerial. Oh, there it is. All that's for cars. All that's for cars to move around, all that's for cars, storage, everything on the streets is just free, public space for private storage of automobiles. And look at the buildings, what's the percentage? Floor area ratio, setbacks, non-conformities, what are we doing? Houses are going for $3 million, rents $3,500. We're cementing in auto dependency by widening our freeways. We got bigger fish to fry. I think this is a good business. I think it's going to be fine, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rojas, any comments on the motion?
No, sir, we're good.
Okay, Commissioner Russell?
Just, I'm a little troubled by it, this, from the perspective that, I know that businesses succeed and, you know, people, landowners can do what they want, but I think we need to acknowledge that we're going to lose a 50-year-old business by approving this, that some, there's going to be people that lose their jobs because we approve this, and I think that we need to keep that in someplace in our mind as we move forward with these projects. But that's all, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Erath, any comments on the motion?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of quick questions about the motion. Does the maker of the motion include staff's recommendation about the Orange County Healthcare Agency?
Yes, sir, thank you very much for bringing that up. The motion also is to include the modifications to Condition of Approval 13. Thank you, Commissioner Erath.
And also, are we changing the language in Operational Condition 21 to shall instead of may?
Well, it does, it, well, it should, it should say shall. The word may was in the staff report, which is fine, so, but yes, that parking agreement needs to be in place for this business to function under the CUP.
Okay, thank you. I would, I'd like to follow some of the comments that Commissioner Toler made a couple minutes ago, especially to the folks on Ogilvy Street who came out. Thank you for coming out, we always enjoy when the public comes out and participates in this. And, you know, having gone to Newport Harbor High School, I'm very familiar with your neighborhood, so. I will say, I don't think there's, there is for certain not a person on this dais that would make a judgment that was against the best interests of our neighbors and our community, right? And when we, when we look at projects like these, it's our community as to why we're up here in the first place, and it's always in the back of our minds. So, I would, I would never support something that would come to the detriment of our people, ever. And I hope that you come to believe that, too, in time. I think this is, this is a good project. I think that as we continue to hear these things, we can continue to improve our approach, especially, or maybe I would say, including how we capture the ADT as well, and to make sure that the funds that we do get out of this do continue to improve our roadways, whether that's for bikes, pedestrians, et cetera, right? I'm happy to support this motion, and I will pass it back to you, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Vivar, any comments on the...
Yes, sir, thank you. I appreciate staff's hard work on this. I know, I know that countless hours go into preparing these staff reports, and in how much effort goes into standing up there and answering our often annoying or incessant questions, so thank you for that. However, as it relates to this specific project, I am a, an engineer, and we engineers by trade or by, maybe by strenuous hours in the classroom, are people of numbers. And when we look at potential impacts of projects, ADT serves much more than just parking, it serves to analyze safety for pedestrians and cyclists along a street or along a sidewalk. The numbers serve to show, to study potential increases of pedestrian vehicle, 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 or other conflicts. And when faced with a lack of evidence or numbers, we engineers will go out there and study things, take measurements, perform studies, and calculate. In this case, I believe that the number we are using for the, to calculate the existing In this case, I believe that the number we are using for the, to calculate the existing ADT for the, for the dry cleaners is insufficient and it is not necessarily the fault of our city staff. Unfortunately, ITE's manual can be limited. However, in the lieu of numbers to look at, that is where traffic studies come into play and why I believe when she, when we should be making decisions as to the future of a site, whether or not it'll increase the likelihood of vehicle park, vehicle accidents or pedestrians or cyclists, basing our decision on numbers and the traffic study is safer than coming, than approving something and seeing what happens six months later, though I do appreciate the concern in that request for the six months. So as a man of the numbers, I just can't see the numbers in this and I, and I do worry for the circulation situation and potential safety concerns. I mean, what, what use is a brand-new spanking sidewalk if you're going to get rear-ended by a car if you're walking down there? So, and then the other thing I'd like to note is land use element 6.7 says that we should encourage new while retaining existing businesses in our city. And we are not retaining an existing business that has been paying taxes and providing services to the local community for 50-plus years and burdening them with having to move. And we know that small businesses have been hammered very, by the pandemic in various ways. And in sort of hearkening back to the beginning of this meeting and making everything go circle, everything go full circle, a comment was made that we should have things in the community that people can go to without having to bike, without having to drive across the city or to a nearby city for. And in getting rid of a dry cleaning business that is providing those services, we are now obligating the people there who use this business to go further away to access this business and maybe the people living in those nearby areas who now have to get in a car to safely get to wherever this dry cleaners moves or to another one that may be closer to them. So what are we doing with our decisions in terms of the future of the city and in protecting existing businesses and in really allowing for a mix of business types that will, that will really decrease the distance that people have to drive and provide neighborhoods that are, that are complete and that people can just walk to with their kids to get services rather than to get in a car to go across the city? So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman, and why I am not, why I am opposing the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir, very much. Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I resonate with a lot of what Commissioner Vivar has expressed. And my, my struggle is that we're not up here to set policy, we're here to implement a policy. And the questions about displacing businesses that have been operating here, that's a problem, something I'm concerned about, but I'm not here to set policy. That isn't our role. Council sets policy on issues like this, and I think it's appropriate and important for Commissioner Vivar to express that concern because if they hear his concern, they can take that under advisement. I keep looking at this diagram. I was going to make comments based on the perspective of your, your new building. I'm not bothered by these parking lots. I'm not angry at cars. I don't see them as an impediment to life. And I somehow feel like I'm constantly having to defend why people have cars, why they need cars, why they drive cars, why they need to park cars. And until there's a better solution, and I haven't seen it, I guess I'll have to keep defending cars. What, what I am concerned about, I'm going to support the motion, but not enthusiastically. And so you wouldn't care why I'm not enthusiastic about it, but I'll tell you anyway. It's because it feels like you're shoehorning a business into a place that doesn't function well for the business. I parked in front of that building this weekend. Very dangerous backing out. If I ever came to this business, I would never park there because it's that dangerous backing out. And of the eight parking stalls that are provided adjacent to that, I think the first couple are very dangerous to park in because as you try to back out of those, you're literally backing out into the driveway access to the Von's Shopping Center. And when I was at the, the site this weekend, I walked past the eighth parking stall and looking at the entire area there. And while I was there, about five cars came in the driveway, just in the very short time that I was there. I suspect that's a very busy driveway. So I think parking is going to be dangerous. I appreciate that the chairman has asked that this come back after six months because we'll find out if it's working or, or not working. I was reluctant to support this initially, but knowing that the same property owner that you're leasing your building from, you're also leasing the parking from, makes me a little more comfortable that the two go hand in hand. And there is a condition of approval that obligates you to solving any parking problems. Take that obligation seriously because that's part of the condition of approval and that would be important to keep in mind. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Anna, a voice vote, please.
Chair DeArco?
Aye.
Vice Chair Zick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rojas?
Aye.
Commissioner Toller?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
No.
Commissioner Vivar?
Nay.
Commissioner Erath?
Yes.
That motion carries 5-2 with Commissioner Russell and Commissioner Vivar voting no.
Okay. Thank you. That decision is final in seven days unless appealed to the city council. Thank you very much. Good luck, folks. Okay. That moves us to old business on the agenda. We have none. We have no new business on the agenda. So we'll move to department reports. We'll begin with Public Works. Mr. Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief. The only announcement is that Jordan Park, we had the ribbon cutting this morning at 9:00 AM. The mayor was in attendance along with members of the PACS Commission. So we have a brand-new playground over at Jordan Park, which is for everyone to enjoy. So that's our Public Works announcement. And I defer back to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Development Services, report, Ms. Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I have no report this evening, but I will plan on giving one next week as to the items discussed tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Barlow, it was very nice to have you tonight. Thank you for participating and for your expertise. And do you have any reports tonight?
I have nothing to report tonight except that you'll have your regular fellow back next time.
All right. Well, I'm glad Tarkwood's getting a little time away. That's great.
Yes.
All right. With that, we'll stand in adjournment to our regularly scheduled meeting of Monday, September 26, 2022. Good night.